Okay, can you hear us all, Jody?
Can you hear us, Jody?
Okay, welcome to our work session for our City Council meeting for the city of Woodland Hills. It is Tuesday, December 14th, and we are glad you are all here. We are starting out this evening, first thing, with hearing from the applicants to fill us City Council seat that is being vacated by Councilmember Ottley, who is moving. And we will, the community will miss them, but we are looking forward to serving with, we've got some really great applicants tonight to hear from. So I think that what, Jody Stones, our recorder, has the order that is determined by the state which the applicants will speak. So what we are going to do is give you four minutes to kind of introduce yourselves, make any statement you want to make, tell us a little about yourselves, and then we will give about five minutes for the council to ask you questions. We'll see if that works, and then move on from there. So, Jody? So Jeff Berger, then Ben Hilliard, then Rod Munn? Okay, great. Let me, just a minute, I'm going to...
Can I ask a quick question before they start? Were there applications available for any of the resident, I mean, I got calls about all three of them, but I don't, didn't ask if their resumes or whatever were, were on the city website for residents to view? Okay. Okay. I mean, I know I had them, but I wasn't sure if residents who called me had been able to view them. All right.
Okay, I am going to kind of turn this, I'll start my timer so you can, and I'll try and watch it, give you 30 seconds notice, but I'll kind of turn it where you can see it too, if you want.
How many minutes will we decide?
Four.
Four minutes.
So we will start with Jeff.
Yes.
Yeah, but it won't...
Okay, good. I'm Jeff Berger. My wife, Sherri, and I live up on Deep Forest Circle by the water tanks. We've been residents here in Woodland Hills since 2016. We started building in 2000, well, we started clearing in 2015, started building in 16, and it's 2017 we moved in. And, you know, our, our history here in Woodland Hills goes back a little before that. We bought our property in '06, '07, bought two lots, and just kind of sat on them. We lived down in Draper. And then we decided to build. This was the place where we wanted to settle. And even before we started building, we were involved in some of the city activities. I remember one Saturday, we laid sod up at the park. I think we were clearing land at the time, and the breakfast, we got to meet a lot of people, and we cleared the, you know, laid the sod. And then we got involved in the sewer process, the connecting the dry sewer. We lived in an area, we were going to live in an area where we were going to have to have septic, and we wanted sewer, and we got involved in the history and with Mayor Lauritsen, and I, we even had a meeting with some of the citizens. I think Wendy, you were there, I remember, but Low was there, and I think someone from Arrive. Anyway, two weeks before we would just dig for our sewer line, the city connected the sewer. So, and then from there on, we've been involved in a lot of other projects. I spent a lot of time up at the basin, working, volunteering up there, and then with Craig Northrup up at the water tanks, clearing that knoll, and right now I'm on the, member of the PTR Committee. So I've been involved, my wife has been involved for a number of years, and, you know, honestly, there comes a point when, you know, you feel as though, hey, you're either going to be part of the problem, or you're going to be part of the solution. And so that's what pretty much inspired me to, when Bob vacated, we found out Bob was vacating his position, that to go ahead and try and use my talents, my skills, my background as a business owner, and involved in development, and HOA maintenance and management, to try and, you know, move the city along. And so, pretty much, that's why I'm here. I'm retired, I have a lot of time to devote to be a councilman, and look forward to the opportunity of serving with Dave, and Doral, and Janet, and Kerry, if that's a decision of the, of the council.
Thank you, Jeff. All right.
How are we going to do the questions? Are we going to just go around the room, or just kind of say them?
I think we let both of them do their opening, and then we'll just do it.
Oh, so not ask an individual question?
We will.
They each make their statement.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Ben, you're next.
I'll come up here. Okay, I feel like I was just here, doing this. I'm Ben Hilliard. I love this wonderful city. As you guys know, I've spent the last few months going, you know, and meeting people in their, their homes, discussing with them, speaking with them, and it really got me more ramped up than anything about how wonderful our wonderful city is. I was able to talk with them, be able to hear their concerns. One thing that I learned very strongly as I went, you know, door to door, was the city's actually doing pretty good. There are a few concerns, there are issues, and I found that they mostly stemmed around communication, ignorance, they don't know what's going on, and then also just enforcement of ordinances. And a lot of that had to do with also not knowing exactly what those ordinances were, or what they needed to do before certain things. And so that was one of the main reasons that I thought, you know, this is a wonderful opportunity. When Bob Ottley decided to unfortunately leave us, we're a little bitter about that, Bob. But to be able to have the opportunity to bring my skill sets to the table, I know this isn't the mayor, and I'm so excited for Brent on that position. And I understand that this, as a council person, that's a different role than it is the mayor, and I'd be happy and excited to work with each of you, and have a different role than the two. I've been able to work with a lot of different people throughout the city. I've been able to contribute, help, but mostly I'm just, I'm just excited. I love what's going on, I know what those concerns are, like I said, I know our wonderful staff, I've been able to work with them extensively, and I'm really wanting to make sure that we highlight them more, be able to communicate all of the great things that they've done. And I've done a little bit of work already on that, to be able to do those interviews with them, if anybody hasn't seen those, but to highlight the real excellence that they bring to this city. So, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm Rod Munn, and my wife, Mary, and I are, have been residents of Woodland Hills for four years. And I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity for me to be sure why I would like to fulfill the seat that's open for council. The professionally, my background is management consulting. In my own firm, I've consulted for the past 35 years to organizations, large and small, domestic, internationally, public and private sectors. And two years ago, I had an opportunity to witness in a tax and truth in taxation meeting, many of our residents who were angry, dissatisfied, and frustrated at, and their anger was largely directed at council and the mayor. Ordinarily, that would, that would be a problem for some, but for people like me, I saw an opportunity. I saw an opportunity to help the city. And of my own volition, I put together an initiative to basically evaluate and consult gratis to the city up to a year of my time to help organize, develop what was necessary to allow our city to be the crown jewel, I think it is, of the lawsuit. I presented that initiative to the city, and it was extremely well received. But unfortunately, for a variety of reasons, the city was up against it, and we were not able to complete that initiative. When this council seat became available, I again see it as an opportunity for us to have a second bite at the apple. And the vision that I had is we dedicate this council seat to assume the role of working with the city, both the executive as well as legislative sides, our citizenry, and all staff, to create and develop operations to improve all of what we do, top to bottom, side to side. So the reason that I am seeking this role is because I would like to lead that initiative in this open seat so that we can establish the kind of city that I believe we all desire. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Okay. Questions, let's, should we start? Let me start. Do you want to ask questions, Bob?
At the right time, sure.
Well, we could start with you, and work our way around.
Okay. I...
Now's the right time. It's your seat that they're trying to get, so...
Yeah, so, yeah, but, anyway, how much time do we have?
Let's try and keep it to, like, five minutes. Well, yeah, for all, well, okay.
Five minutes.
Let's...
All the questions?
No, no, okay.
Each one of us, five minutes?
Yeah, let's do that. You have five minutes to talk.
Okay. So, as, as each of you are aware, being a member of the city council is a very collaborative process, and as an individual, you only have one vote. It takes three votes to get anything done. So I would like to ask Rod how he would work in a collaborative environment to gain support from the other council members.
Well, collaboration is a process that, of course, is initiated by whoever is attempting to effect whatever change or initiative. And I think it boils down to respect, developing respect, trust, and involvement with the people who want to collaborate. It's been my experience, being that most individuals and organizations want to, many times, many do not know quite how. So in a collaborative effort, usually there are established goals around which we agree, and then we work to obtain those goals. Sometimes compromise is necessary, sometimes arm twisting is necessary, but in the end, collaboration, collaborative effort is just that. It involves interaction of two or more people in obtaining a legitimate objective.
Great. Jeff, you and I have spoken quite a bit recently about various aspects of how the city's going and that type of thing. And you've expressed some, some concerns, which I think are valid and appropriately expressed, and I don't, don't have any issues with you expressing those, in fact, I support them in, in many ways. Can you tell us about an experience that you had where you worked in a, in a highly regulated environment, and how you were able to work within those regulations to accomplish your objectives and goals?
Well, by regulated, if you mean government, I have never, I've never served in a government position. My experience has been on the business side. Having said that, there's, there's a lot of overlap, negotiation, compromise, being able to work with, in my case, customers, and in your case, as the city councilman, with, with the members of, of the community. And I've always prided myself in the ability to, to negotiate, to compromise, and to find middle ground, and I think that's the important thing. I, I, I'm a firm believer in finding the middle ground, and that has worked for me in my business, that has worked for me when I was an HOA president in Provo, getting people together, sitting down, hearing both sides, mediating, and not being one to take a particular position. And I think with the city council, there are some issues where I, and I certainly don't presume to know all the details, and I would never say that, but I think there may be some intransigence within the city council that we need to kind of look at and say, is that really the best way to go about solving a problem? Is it my way or the highway? I don't believe in that. And I think there's give and take, and we have to be willing to maybe swallow pride at some time, if, in order to get something done, because there's more at stake, there's a whole community at stake, and we have to put that first and foremost.
Thank you. And that's basically what my question to Rod was about, is, is being able to work with others and take other opinions. Ben, can you explain to us about how you would respond and deal with a very passionate topic that the council was dealing with, and you happened to be on the wrong side of the fence, maybe? And so when the vote came, your opinion didn't take sway. How would you respond and work forward with that type of situation?
So I think one of the greatest parts about a city council is the council side of it, right? It's to come together and discuss things, to be able to find out, you know, because the reason we have councils instead of, you know, dictators, or just one person at the head, is because we all come with different personal experiences. We all come with different outlooks on life. And so if I come into a vote, and I find that I am on the losing end of a vote, you know, it comes down to now, how do we unify behind it? If that's what the council decided, that is what I will support, and I will back that. If residents come and try and console or work with me, say, oh, I was with you, and I'll say, no, this is how it is now, and this is what we need to do going forward. What the council says is creates its city ordinance, its law, and that is how we need to abide it. So there is a time and a place to, to kind of debate it out, and then after the vote, it's time to get in line.
Thank you. And so I'm basically done asking questions, but basically what I've asked is what I would consider some overarching guidance and characteristics that I would hope that each one of you as candidates and as a council member would adopt, that you would be collaborative, that you would look for other people's opinions, that you would learn to, to understand what the requirements are that we have to live within. Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're not so good, and that sometimes we lose, and that when we lose, it's time to buckle up and support the decision of the whole, and put our personal opinions to the side. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Dave?
Okay, so I have the same question for all three of you, and if we could, just go in the same order that you did your opening statements. So, two questions. How do you see the different, the city being different in three years from now, as a result of what you did? And then, secondly, what specific initiatives are you going to take on to get us there?
Well, like the other two candidates, I think one of the biggest issues facing us in this, in this community is the tension in the community. And I would hope that in the two, three years that I'm serving on the council, that I can, I can be a force to alleviate that tension. I mean, community harmony is what brought us all here, and we're, we're slowly losing that over some issues, and I, I think we need to address that, and, and that would be the first priority that I would have, is to, let's lessen those tensions. And the way I would do that, one of the ways I would do that, is I, I, social media to me is poison, and I, I will not engage in any conversation, debate on social media. But I think there are a lot of people who are a part of social media, who have, who take part in it, they have a lot, they have value to add. And so what I would try and do is to channel that away from social media, and get them involved in the government directly. Maybe, maybe as a council person, as a committee member, but, but give them a voice, a legitimate voice, rather than, you know, you know, this, the social media thing is just, is just, to me, is just poison. The other thing I would hope in a couple of years is to take care of the pending, or the ongoing litigation that's occurring here in, in the city. And again, I'll go back to what I said to Bob, I said, I think it's going to take some give and take on part of the city, and on part of the offended parties, and again, I feel a fresh set of eyes, a new perspective can, can help in that process. I, you know, I want to see the park develop. I want to see more activities that we can enjoy in the park. I'd like to see a basketball center, I'd like to see pickleball, I'd like to see a cycling center. Now, these are all going to take money, and they're going to take input from the city, and it's going to take help from the residents, grants, foundations, but again, bringing people together from all different walks of life, and from all backgrounds, I think, can go a long ways to make those things happen, and make those come to fruition. So I would hope that in two or three years, we would, we would have additional facilities. The other thing I would, I would hope that we would have, is that, I hope that we would, we'd have an active 55 community, a development somewhere here in the city where we can, our senior citizens can, can, can live and enjoy the benefits of Woodland Hills, and not be taxed out of, you know, having to go to Payson, or Salem, or someplace else. I think we can do that if we're willing to work with developers, landowners, and the city. So those are four areas that I think I'd like to see accomplished.
Ben?
So I'm, honestly, I'm really excited to have gotten the opportunity to meet Rod. Sounds like our backgrounds are very similar. So one thing I've done professionally a lot is, is work on systems level, but mostly around cultural transformation. So one of the things that I'd love to see different in the next three years is a little bit of a cultural transformation through systems. Systems can drive behavior in two ways, numbers, so metrics, or through systems. And through those systems, that we can kind of create clarity, better communication flows, tighter understanding around ordinances, and the compliance around those. And then also better understanding around that enforcement of those. Also, I'd love to see a closer city, you know, closer city residents. As I've spoke with many different residents throughout the city, in every single geographic area, they all say they wish they knew the people on the other side. No matter where they are, that's what they want. I've got a few plans that would really make, bringing those types of opportunities together, I think would be very easy and affordable. Also, I'd love to improve some financial income streams. Let's get a little more creative on how we can potentially generate revenue. For sake of time, I've spoken with those on my campaign quite a bit for the financial side, but I really do feel that we're in a great spot, a turning point in the city, and it's, it's really cool. We've got a good outlook. We've got some things that can change, but we really got some great things coming.
With regard to, to your first question, what would I see accomplished after the first review? first three years or so? I think fundamentally, there would exist a strategic plan for the city with clearly outlined goals and objectives that we, we plan to attain. There would be a complete operational plans associated with that strategic plan that would impact every department in the, in the city. And there would also be a greater involvement, citizen resident involvement in city operations across all levels. The, with regard to your second question, what I would see is, the initiative that I would like to take on is putting together and effecting that strategy from the standpoint of creating and developing an initiative that would encompass both the executive side of the shop, legislative side of the shop, citizen involvement, and all staff associated with the city. The, one of the things that we, I think, are struggling with is effective processes. Our controls are weak, and as a result, we have a tendency to fail. Woodland Hills is an outstanding place. You've got outstanding people. When I put together an initiative two years ago, there were many citizens that were willing to step up and be involved in that process. We have resources that are not utilized, and that can be utilized just in our citizenry alone to help the city get to be what I think most people would like to see. So those would be my answers to your question.
And my statement will be less than 30 seconds, but all I can say is, thank you very much for each of you being willing to step up. I mean, honestly, I know all of you. It makes me proud to have all of you. I wish we had three slots. Honestly, seriously. I mean, don't mean that facetiously.
Daryl.
Okay, I'll second what Dave just said. I am really impressed that you three would be willing to do this. I have loved this job, but it, it sure has been a pain at times, I'll be honest with you. So, so I want to ask each of you, why do you want to do this? Rod, can you give me a reason?
Sure, I'm a troublemaker. The...
You sound like it.
They're, they're, I, I think in all honesty, as, as residents, we really have a civic responsibility to help where we can. And it just so happens, I have skills and a background that can help us, I think, get better. And it would not really be right for me not to, not to step up. The, and keep in mind, I am not saying that I simply want to become a cog in an already dysfunctional operation. That is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, what I'd like to do is apply and add whatever skills and assets I have to improve what we were doing, and by definition, alter, change, increase, improve, develop what we're doing so that our work is not more difficult but easier, is not less effective but more effective, not less efficient but more efficient, and increase the involvement and, and attitude of our residents by being good. It is possible for us to be excellent. We have to choose to be excellent, and then we have to take action to do that. I'd like to lead that, that initiative.
Thank you, Jeff. Can I ask you why you want to do this? I, I have an answer from Ben already, he's been very...
Well, it's not for the pay, that's for sure.
Yeah, we know that.
Well, you know, without being redundant, there are a lot of people out here that are hurting. And when I say I don't, I don't participate in social media, I do read it. And there are a lot of people that are hurting, a lot of people who hurt feelings, a lot of people who feel that they've been, you know, they've been, their cause hasn't been heard, and I, well, I sympathize with their, with their plight. I don't necessarily sympathize with their position. And so what I want to do is, I want to, I want those people to feel as though that they can be part of a solution rather than a problem. And by drawing them out, and by, and by holding out a, a hand of friendship, whatever you, however you want to describe it, but by, by bringing them back, I think, I, I think, and, and once they feel that they, that they're welcomed and they have a sense of trust build up, that they have a lot to contribute. And I think I have the temperament for that. I think I can, yes, the expression goes, I can reach across the aisle. And I, I'm 71 years old, and I have, have made my living that way in business, and I, I just feel that, you know, that there's a lot, that, there's a lot of potential out there that's, that's unmined, that, that can be a real help to this community if we're willing to reach out and listen and, and hear them and, and try and find some sort of a, a middle ground and get them involved and so they can help us make this community better. I think I can, I think I can do that.
Okay. Ben, give you a choice. You can tell me why, or I could ask you another question.
Whatever you want to do.
I want to ask you another question. I know, I know you, you've, you've shown me why. A citizen walks up to you and says, why do I have to get a permit to do X, Y, Z on my own property? How would you respond?
That is a great question. One of the things that I've, you know, been able to learn in talking with everybody is the permits and the ordinances are here to protect us all so that we don't infringe on other people's rights. One of the problems that we currently have is the fact that there has been a lax on some perceived enforcement, I'll put it that way, and thus they are using it to justify their behavior. This is something that we just, we can't continue. Ordinances are here for a proper reason. Now, if, for instance, they don't want to get said permit, right, my answer would be, okay, if you don't want to get a permit, there are consequences for that, right? We're not judging executioner here. But I would strongly encourage them to do it correctly. I would inform them that if you don't, you might have it all ripped out, it may have to be, you know, demolished at your expense. There are consequences. But mostly, I would talk about everybody around them, you know? Permits are not necessarily about you as much as it is about everybody else, especially with safety and all of the other variables that come into play with permits.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we've got a lot of time, but we can come back if needed.
Okay, should I stop? Thank, I really appreciate you three being here. I, I know each of you, I've, I've seen you donate hours to the city, and you're to be commended for, for wanting to continue. Thank you.
Paul?
Okay, as the one who assumed just be a citizen. I'll beat you. I've watched, over the last six years, the city has changed quite a bit. Some good, some bad, but it's changed. We have a different, you know, the last couple of years, one of the biggest positive changes I have seen is use of committees. So my question to each one of you would be, how would you envision committees being used? Keep it the way it is? Shrink them? Enlarge? What, what's your vision for use of committees moving forward? And we'll just start, actually, to start, Rod will go this way, that's okay.
I, I think, I think committees are tools, and like any tool, they have a role. And I'm not one of those individuals that will go to the table with the answer believing that there's inherent worth in any committee. I think committees have to be put together for a specific purpose. I think like any other organization, they have to have controls, they have to have stated outcomes at, at the outset, and I think the degree to which they accomplish those goals and are effective must take place, and it must do so within a specified period of time. So like any tool, I would use committees as required. The, whether or not they're required depends upon what activity I'm trying to accomplish, and whether or not, in fact, a committee is the proper tool.
David, you mentioned in your posting on social media that, when you were describing the position, you talked about how, you kind of alluded to the fact that as a councilman, councilmen can be overworked, councilwomen can be overworked. You have a lot of responsibilities, and there are just so many hours in the day. And, you know, and you posed that question to each of us as to, you know, how we would deal with that. Well, I think committees is a fundamental part of any, any organization. A committee, if, if it's organized and if it's chaired properly, can be of immense value to a council, because it can do a lot of the legwork, it can do a lot of the, of the time-consuming investigation and research. And then properly, you know, with, with the, with the, with the proper staffing, it can make recommendations to the, to the city council that will, will, will either, one, provide a, a new, a new view into, to an issue that maybe the council's been struggling with, or two, it, it will, it will substantiate and validate something that the council has talked about wanting to do. So, and it also involves, as I said earlier, it involves people in the community, which I think is, is so important. And so committees are, for the sake of a committee, no, but a committee designated for a certain purpose and empowered to go out and to do, and then, committee has to feel as though that when they come back with a recommendation, that that's going to be seriously considered, and it's just not going to be kind of glossed over. And so I think there's, it's incumbent upon a council, you know, if they're going to empower a committee, they've got to be willing to follow their recommendations and, and implement whatever they feel is to be the way forward.
Thank you, Paul. I think committees really, it comes back to that council point, right? They're there to counsel with the, the head or the chair of said council or said committee. I think, though, there's a couple steps that need to happen first. One, I'd want to evaluate any committees that I would be maybe put over, or whatever the case may be, and find out about their effectiveness, you know? Find out, are they worth having and continuing and sustaining? Are they adding value or not? I love what Jeff said. A committee first, to the sake of a committee, is not a good committee. Also, I would love to be able to make sure that they are, you know, properly allocated, make sure that they understand what are the, kind of the, the fences or parameters to which they're allowed to operate within. They're not an authority. They are not an elected body. They are there to gather information and present insight only. They can't be thinking that their, their insight is going to happen. I think we also probably could do a little bit better, though I do think committees are great, making them more geographically diverse, having members on committees from all areas of Woodland Hills, because each area has different concerns. They are more attentive, they are more concerned, they are, they're more passionate about different things, and I think that will really strengthen our committees and make them not, you know, sway certain ways particularly.
So, Mike, I'm going to be less than 30 seconds, but just because it's already been said, I mean, I am so impressed with the three of you, and I feel like, whenever choice is made, the city will be better off, or whatever choice is made. I just really appreciate, really appreciate it.
And just so you know, he went through the process.
Yes. Yes, he did.
All right, Carrie.
Hey, thanks. I want to say, all three, impressive. The resumes, the amount, the quality that's brought forth. I have one question for, for the three of you as a whole, and then one individual question. So overall, Ben, we kind of all felt the same way when we were either elected or appointed, that, you know, we're coming in gung ho to change, change the world, change Woodland Hills, improve it, make it better. And then you find the constraints of public sector service. With that being said, this last election, election season, this cycle that we just went through, out of the three of you, Ben was the only one that ran. One, why did you two not run? I heard why you're running now, but why did you not run at that time? I looked back at the numbers, Ben did get 44 or something percentage, something 45% of the, of positive outcome from the citizens of supporting him, either first or second votes, I guess that's a combination, I, I can't remember. But with that said, I would like to ask you two, one, why didn't you have the itch to, to run this last time? Because based on everything that was put out and some of the things, that was one of the questions some of the residents have posed to me as we've been preparing to interview the three of you.
For any, any...
For, for this last election cycle, yeah, why didn't you run for either mayor or council?
I, I chose not to run for mayor because of the time requirements that I think it's going to require. I'm in the process of building a new practice area, and, and it simply would not work. This role, provided it is dedicated to improving operations throughout the city, I think would be ideal from this standpoint of the time requirements and, and the city needs.
Hey, Jeff?
Oh, that's a good question. I had actually entertained the idea of, of running for mayor, and I had, Sheri and I had talked about it, and she said, she said, honey, I just, I don't think you've got the temperament. I, I, I just think you're, you're too, you get too excited too easily. And then Michael Laurison threw his hat into the ring, and I had, have a lot of respect for Michael, and, and so I, well, I'm not going to run, but I'll, I'll support Michael. And so that's what I did. I supported Michael and his efforts to become mayor. As far as city council, I never really thought about city council. But, you know, the timing, the fact, as I said, you either, you know, you got to do something. You either sit on the sidelines and keep quiet, or you sound off on social media, or you become part of the solution. And so the timing was when Bob Seed came up, I said, in fact, I even put my application in before I talked to Sheri, because I knew how she would feel about it. But we talked about it, and she said, I support you, so that's the answer that I...
Okay, so I, I mean, do you want to say anything, or do you, can I ask you my individual que, I have an individual question for each of you. So Ben, based on your resume, and Rod's, and what you've said so far tonight, you have very similar platforms, I guess you could say, for system change, for system improvements. So what do you think, with this system management type philosophy, cultural improvements that you said, what differentiates you or makes you uniquely qualified to then go forward? Because, you know, there's some, there's some things that are similar.
It does sound like that. And obviously, I don't know where Rod stands, so saying what makes me different will be impossible. But what I can say is, the philosophy to which I have been trained and performed and consulted with many different organizations throughout the nation on is... consulted with many different organizations throughout the nation on is all around cultural transformation. It is one thing to be able to get results, to be able to, as we say in business, to get the KPI, right, the key performance indicator, to be able to say, hey, we hit this financial goal, we did this. One of the things we do in our practice is we also talk about KBIs, which are key behavioral indicators. So it's very important what we get done, but it's also just as important as how we get it done. And with that comes also sustainment. So when you're looking at a full systemic approach on cultural transformation, you always are wanting to, one, look at what are the guiding principles that are driving the result we're looking for? Because those driving principles are the inertia or the opposite force that will impact us going forward. A good leader can pound out a bad system and make it work, but a good system can help even a weak leader still be successful. And that is what we try and do. We also, like I said, are looking, what is the behavioral outlook? So what I'm looking at is, not only what are we looking to get done in the city, but also how will that affect and transform the culture within our city, meaning the residents? So there's the administrative side and the resident's side, and how do we come into a synergistic state to be able to perform the best going forward?
Thank you. Jeff, for you, so impressed with all of the things that you've been able to do with homeowners associations, with your business, and of course, what you and Sherry together have been able to do with PTR. My question for you is, at the bottom of your application to us, you talked about the need for additional revenue. Now, as a public sector entity that we are, we're limited in what that revenue, how we generate that revenue. So I would like to know from you, what kinds of revenue are you talking about when you want to do these improvements, other than the grants that the Parks and Rec already do? What additional revenue sources are you looking to?
Well, I tell you right off about what I'm not looking for, because I don't think it's feasible at this particular stage of our growth here, and that's a commercial revenue. I'm not looking to find a State Farm insurance agent to build a building to here. That's not going to happen right now. But I think there is a lot of opportunity for development in terms of residential development. Now, some of you have poo-pooed the idea, well, it's only $1,200 a year on a $500,000 house. But you know, you take that and you multiply that by the number of houses that we have, plus you multiply that by an active 55 community, you know, there, I think realistically, we're missing a boat. I think we're not working close enough with our developer friends here in the area and with the owners of property here, getting them together and working out, getting them to work out some sort of an arrangement where both of them can benefit. You know, when I was in the development there in Draper, we did some things that helped us acquire the property and then helped us to get the property through planning and zoning. We did all that before. In other words, you've got a piece of property that's 15 acres, and it's zoned for one-acre lots, whatever, you change that zoning before they even talk to a developer. It paves the way for a developer. If he knows that he doesn't have to sit on a piece of property for a year in order to get zoning through, he's going to be more likely to enter into an agreement with that property owner. If the property is too high, if it costs too much money, you work with them and you say, all right, look, I'll sell you the property for X, but I want a piece of every house that you build. So there's a lot of ways that you can work with a developer and a property owner and the city to cover all the bases and get the work done. I think we're missing out on the residential, the taxes from our, I think we can build more houses and generate more income, and then the commercial will come. We've got to have a population base before we can attract the commercial base. So that's what I would work on.
Okay. And then my question for Rod. Rod, part of what you put in your application talked about the idyllic and unique quality best characterized in Woodland Hills.
Yes.
That is an important aspect to all of us, quality of life. That's why we love here, not just the beauty of nature and the animals that we see and the neighbors that we have, but actually, it is that quality of life. So in terms of system changes that you've talked about, how do we have change, which we know is, change is inevitable? And I've lived here 30 years, there's been a lot of changes that those who are demanding change don't realize how much change we've already had in those 30 years. With that being said, how do you go forward maintaining quality of life, which is a value?
Yes.
And yet, then we have to also have the value of taxes that are also always competing against each other as we make changes.
Sure.
So how do you balance that?
Sure. Change is not necessarily bad. Change can be good as well. I think what you're really asking really required is, we have to lead change as well as manage it. We don't sit back and wait for change to roll over us. So in leading change, at some point in time, we're trying to define what we want to be when we grow up. What do we want to look like, and why do we want to look like it? And then we have to build the proper processes and practices and resources into developing toward that goal. So in other words, we have to be proactive. We don't react. We are responsible for our destiny. And to the extent that we control our involvement in our future, I think we win. So from the standpoint of the nature of Woodland Hills, one of the things that I think has influenced the idyllic nature of our city is its geography, its topography, the people, the natural surroundings, all contribute to an environment that leads to serenity and peace and comfort and what I think is an elevated quality of life. I think at the same time, the reverse of that is true. Destroy the topography, destroy the environment, destroy the nature of loving and caring camaraderie between the citizens, and then you will have quite the opposite. So I agree, those are values. They should be cherished, but they won't remain without proactive activity on the part of the resident.
Great. Okay, thank you.
We can have time for one more if needed.
Doral, you, kind of like you had another question, so let's do that.
I won't ask anymore right now.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Okay. Did somebody else have further questions?
I have one question. I'd like to ask all three, and probably my process could be longer than your answer. Each of the members of the city council has significant responsibility that go beyond the city. Paul is on the animal shelter board. I don't know. I'm on Solid Waste District, I'm on the 911 Board of Directors. I have five committees that I support. And so we, as a city, are small, we don't have staff, we are the staff, we have to do the work, so it takes a lot of work to do these things. Each one of the members of the council brings very specific talents and abilities. We have software expertise, we have safety, we have legal, we have interface with legislating, we have data and number crunching, and those types of things. We don't want to overload the council with a whole bunch of the same type of talent. We want to have the diversity that's there. So in five words or less, tell me what talents you would bring that are unique to you to support the day-to-day operation of the city.
Talent.
Seven. Seven, in five words or less.
Like safety, like legal, like budget.
I would say, for me, it would be law enforcement.
Law enforcement. Okay, thank you.
That's only two. I think three words.
Pass the mic.
Pass the mic to Jeff.
Pass the mic.
Yeah, because Jeff's answer needs to be on the mic.
Budget.
Ben?
So it'd be probably administration, networking, unifying, and conflict resolution.
Thank you.
So I have one question that a resident actually recommended that I ask, and that is, what, how do you measure success on the council? So what is going to be your measurement of success?
Don't say anything about posting on social media, because that's never a success.
I've done all right.
Anybody?
Yeah. In any order around here.
Success, I think, is defined at the outset. We have to establish the goal that we're trying to accomplish, and to the extent we accomplish that goal, we have been successful. Anything other is just process for the sake of process.
Well, being willing to listen to ideas that may run counter to yours, and setting aside one's pride and ego, and admitting when you need to step aside and fall in line. Along with that, you know, well, are we going to have some summation?
I think we should.
Yeah. But, yes.
One of my, I guess one of my answers to your question there, Dave, is if we have better lanes of communication and residents are feeling and we're hearing that they know what's going on and that they are better informed on what's going on.
Yeah, one more, too. So Bob brought up that one of us is the nerd that follows the state legislature. That's me. Executive branch as well as legislative branch. We're coming up to our legislative session, which will begin January 18th. I sit on the board for the League of Cities and Towns, one of 18, and I represent small cities. With that, we follow and are active participants in the legislative process. There's a lot of things that come down from the state that are mandated to cities. Now, we don't, as a political subdivision, we don't really have a say once it's passed, but we have a say, we get to put our voice in prior. One of the things that I've really been focusing on the last two years has been the housing component. Now, with that being said, not only accessory dwelling units, which we will talk about this evening, but also zoning and other types of density in housing, right? Some of that we've avoided because we're a smaller city, and it was based on the class of city you're in. There are some proposals on the table right now that it won't be based on your proposal, on your class of city, but rather on your class of county. So although we are a small class city, we live in a large class county, and we might now be under those rules and mandated to have certain zoning within our city boundaries. The same with accessory dwelling units, we have to have a certain percentage of our city that has those units available to qualify for, as they say, accessible or affordable housing options. With that, those possibilities in the next two months, how do you see our ability to take that information that will be given to us, we don't get to pick what their final outcome is, and then make sure that we're following state statute legally and get, maintain, again, we're coming back to quality of life. There are citizens who don't want us to have less than any, there are citizens who don't want growth. These are some of the hard choices that we have to make as a council and present that to the city. Yes, there's been some ideas of 55 and other, but at this time, we don't have zoning for that. So I just want to know all of your feelings, because there may be other things that pop up that all of a sudden, we say, what? We have to do what? And I'd like your opinion, because I do like to come to the council and ask opinions based on things before I go and vote on how we're going to lobby for or against particular issues.
Well, I don't mean to sound crass here, but, and I've said this before, this isn't Mayberry anymore. Woodland Hills has become a destination. People want to get out from the chaos of the Wasatch Front. They're moving out of Salt Lake City Valley. We've got people coming in from California, Texas. The word is out. Woodland Hills is a destination. And so the small-town kind of atmosphere that we want to keep, yes, we want to keep that, but we have to recognize that with the growth, there comes some things that are hard to swallow. And I understand some of our citizens who want to keep the city, the rural, the way it was 30 years ago when they first moved here, and I sympathize with them. But from where I sit, if we don't take advantage of that as a city, then we're going to be left behind. Elk Ridge, Salem, Payson, Spanish Fork, they're, you know, they're growing like gangbusters. And there's no reason why we can't capture some of that growth. But it may take a hard decision, you know? It may take, you know, putting in a multi, you know, a multi-housing unit, because that's what people want, you know? It may not be what we want, but like I say, it's St. Mayberry anymore, and we have to recognize that. And I don't think, as a council, if we go along and try and maintain what it was like 30 years ago, worst-case scenario, we're going to lose our city status. We'll get adopted into Elk Ridge, Salem. I mean, that's a concern that I have, if we don't take advantage of what's there in before us. You know, this real estate wave is going to crest here soon, and we need to go for it.
With regard to legislation that comes down from the state, clearly, we have to abide by any mandates. At the same time, you indicated that we have the illnesses on us to argue our case before the fact. So my question to you is, are we arguing?
Yes, we are.
We're losing.
No doubt about that.
We're losing too on some of them.
No doubt about that. Sometimes there's competing interests with larger cities that have paid people to do that. But at the same time, we really have had, we have made a big difference on, for little cities. Yes, I feel confident that there have been decisions that have changed because of our voice at the table.
Outstanding.
Okay, Ben?
I love what these gentlemen have said. You know, it is that twofold. What are we doing beforehand, and what are we doing after? How we gather the information from our residents on what they're really looking for? And also making sure that we're gathering information from the residents that aren't just, dare I say, the squeaky wheels, right? Or the loudest spoken? Because we cannot have the minority dictating policy for the majority. So we want to make sure we have the systems in place to be able to gather that information. And then when the state says... And then when the ci- the state says this is the law, how we share that is also very important. Like I said before, how we do things is just as important as what we do.
Guys, good? Everybody?
Ben, do you feel like you could sit on the council and leave the mayorship to the mayor? I mean, that, you worked so hard during the campaign to, to earn that seat. And I, I, I think, well, tell me what's on your mind. Because we, we do not ever put ourselves in the mayor's seat. At least, we try not to. And we haven't, I feel like. So it's a different, it's a, it's a difference. It's a different job, but you may, more than any of us, see, oh, he did that wrong, or he did that right, or, what do you say?
So that's a great question, Dorlan. I'm grateful that you asked. During the campaign, I had a wonderful opportunity to get to know, um, work with, and even campaign alongside, um, Mayor-elect Winder. My respect for him only grew as I got, um, further and further along in the campaign. I have personally, um, I feel I wish I could turn this off at this point. I have no issue with losing to Mayor Winder. Um, I am very grateful for him, and I'm excited to potentially be able to work with him. We've been able to work really well so far. Brent and I have different strengths that were brought to the ballot, um, in November. Um, I don't think we had much overlap. I will do everything in my power to support, to back him. I do not appreciate, um, or tolerate, um, kind of side slander or side conversations. So if anybody wants to ever come to me and say, hey, well, he didn't do this right. What do you think he should have done? I, I don't tolerate that. Because it, it doesn't help anything. I'm no longer running for mayor. And I really want to be able to help and strengthen him.
Okay.
Nate, any further questions? I'm now.
Can we reserve the right to ask questions when we, before the vote, during council meetings, as if we, if something comes up while we're talking?
That would, that would be good.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll decide, yeah, when we're deliberating.
Yeah, in case, after, after they're done with their discussions and as our meeting progresses, we may think of others.
Yep, I think that would be great. You guys?
Are they going to give their closing statements?
Yes, and I, um, I don't really have, I was going to ask questions, but you pretty much answered all my questions. So you're awesome. Yes, so let's give you each up two minutes max to kind of give us your closing statements. And again, I would like to say, I really wish we had three slots. I really do. You are all wonderful. Um, I've had quite an odyssey myself serving the city. And, um, you know, I've served on the planning commission and on the council and as the mayor. And they're all great places to be, you know? They, you do different things in each place, but they all are valuable and very, um, places to serve. So, um, let's start with, uh, Ben. You start this time. Two minutes.
Well, I'll be brief. I know that might not be possible, but.
You're good at it.
Personally, I, you know, thank you so much for each of you. Um, Bob, especially with you departing us, thank you so much. If I'm able to be, able to serve with you, I would greatly look forward to it. I love the city. I plan to be here for the next 50 years. And I really am highly invested in making sure it's the best possible place, like it already is. Um, how can we make it better? Um, I want to be able to collaborate, to work together, um, to bring the voices of the people, um, to be able to talk with them, to be able to disseminate information to them, to be able to make process improvements, to work on our culture, to support our wonderful staff, to give them the strength and the skills that I am able to provide. Thank you.
Great, that was 42 seconds. That's a record.
You're good. Okay, Jeff?
Thirty-some years ago, I was, uh, asked to, uh, to, uh, join a, a governing council. Uh, we were living in New York, uh, had a young family. Members of that council, uh, were, uh, business executives, Wall Street types. Don Staley, Elder Staley was, was, uh, was the president of the council. Uh, Dave Chekets was a member of the council. Uh, and everyone on that council were, uh, they were, you know, icons in the, in the business world. And here I was, little old Jeff Berger, you know, president of my little company, youngest one on the council. And I remember, it was either the first or second meeting, uh, the, the president, President Staley, went around the room and he said, brother, he said, brother, he said, and I swear, he was looking right at me. He said, I don't want any yes-men on this council. He said, if you have something that you have a passion for, I want you to advocate it. I want you to, uh, to do everything in your power to, to get your view across. He said, but, he said, I'm the one that makes the decisions. And when that decision is made, I expect you to fall in line. And that has always been something that I have, uh, in my business, in my relationships with other people. I've always felt that, speak up. You know, conflict i- is the beginning of resolution. Conflict resolution. You know, if you don't have opposing views, you're not going to get anywhere. And so what I will bring to this council is I will speak my mind. And, and I will, it's probably in many instances, be the minority voice. But I, I tell you, I will, I, I, I will advocate for the position that I feel is right. And then when the decision is made, whether it's my deci- whether it's something that, that, that I've been advocating for or somebody else, I will fall in line and I will do everything I can to support that decision.
Thanks, Jeff. Well-stated. Not 43 seconds. Awesome answer.
A, um, a CEO in the past said to me, Rod, you strike me as one of those guys they drop behind enemy lines. And two years later, things are very different. And someone says, who was that guy that, uh, that was here? And, uh, that, that was actually a very good summary of, of the way in which I work. The, um, Woodland Hills, I think, is at a turning point. Uh, I think, uh, we're at a point where we have to not only, uh, look inward but outward. And, uh, there are a couple of issues that I think are very, very important. One is, of course, uh, understanding and coalescing around our own goals and objectives from the standpoint of council, as well as mayor, and organizing so that we're functioning as a homogenous unit. The second thing is, uh, there's great change, uh, in Utah. And there is great change coming south, uh, from Salt Lake City, uh, Salt Lake County, uh, to Utah County. We either meet that change proactively, or we get run over by it. From, uh, the discussions that I've had with various individuals throughout the city, um, my intuition says, uh, we're not quite prepared and there's work to do. I would like, uh, this seat, uh, to be used, uh, to help both council and the executive side of our city, as well as our sitinary, systemry, meet, uh, the coming changes that are, uh, that are in front of us so that we can be successful as a city and attain the goals of it that, uh, we're seeking.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for coming in. We will, um, move on with our work session and then, um, I think we will, um, hold an executive session between the work session and our formal meeting to do some deliberations. And then we will.
Do we do it that way, or do we do it in the open?
Yeah, it has to be still in the open.
We vote, we vote in the open.
Yeah, and we will deliberate, but there may be some, if. No, deliberate in, in, in our meeting, we'll deliberate. In, if there, if we, if anybody has concerns or things about, um, character that need to be discussed, we'll go into closed session and do that.
They're all characters.
Yeah.
They would be here.
Well.
Do you want us to stay or?
Yes.
Yes.
We'd love for you to stay.
Absolutely.
And, uh, you know, I did not have a chance to excuse, um, Mayor-elect Brent Winder, who would have liked to have been here tonight, but he had a family obligation that he had to fulfill tonight. So, um, so his absence should not be interpreted as, um, a lack of commitment or care. All right, um, we are, I'm going to, um, swap the agenda around just a little bit, because we, um, number four, we have an update on litigation matters. And I'm going to scoot that up, because our attorney's sitting in attendance and we're paying him. He's wonderful, but we don't need him to listen to us talk about some of these other. Greg, thank you for being here tonight. Do you have an update for us?
Yeah, no, thank you. It's, it's nice to be, uh.
Yeah.
Involved, not, not personally. I don't know if it's, it's kind of starting to rain up here. I don't know what it's doing down there, but, uh.
Yeah.
We've had some, uh, first thing, yeah, there have been some additional appeals filed.
I guess you've gotten on Jody's bad side, because she won't unmute you. No, I'm kidding.
No, it's.
Go ahead, talk, Greg.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there, not a whole lot to report, uh, but, you know, as in discussing the, the situation, which has been a long-running one with, uh, uh, Dr. and Mrs. Fujia, uh, you know, have, uh, they have filed some additional appeals of some decisions that have been made by the city. I think everybody is pretty much aware of the general situation, so I won't spend time, raising that or discussing that unless you have specific questions. But, um, what we're trying to accomplish as a city, and again, this is, uh, this is not something where the city is on one side or the other. We are the regulator here of the, between, you know, our job is to, uh, properly apply codes and ordinances and standards to, uh, development and buildings that are built in the city. This is not a city building and it's not a us-versus-them sort of situation. Uh, we, we have two parties. One is the owner of the property, the Adams, who have, uh, built a building, obviously built a home, and that needs to, they would like to complete. And then, uh, we have had a neighboring property owner, which is who the few, who, who is the Fuges, who have, as a neighboring property owner, have standing to participate in land use decisions that are made about the neighboring property. The, the Utah code provides for people that either have a interest that is distinct and separate from the general public, or are neighboring property owners to have, be able to, uh, participate as such. As I think everybody knows, we're kind of at the, kind of the tail end of the construction of the home on the Fuge- on the, on the Adams' property. The home's been constructed. Uh, it is being lived in under a temporary certificate of occupancy. Uh, we are trying to, uh, you know, reach the point, hopefully ha- help have Adams reach the point where it can receive a permanent certificate of occupancy. But there are certain things that the Adams need to do, and there have been questions raised. And one of the things that the city has done, because of the technical nature of the questions raised about, uh, certain aspects of the construction next door, in particular, at this point, uh, we're talking about landscaping drainage and a, uh, uh, holding back the property so there's not a situation where somebody's property, sloughs off onto an, onto a neighboring property, uh, which is, you know, something we always have to be concerned about in Woodland Hills, else we wouldn't have the name Woodland Hill. So if everything was flat, that would be a concern in Woodland Hills. But we all know that, you know, the property isn't flat and we have hillside. So, um, as you know, one of the things we did is brought in, uh, uh, an engineer by the name of David Alder of Inside Engineering to be an independent consultant to the city to help our building official and others with technical information. Under the building code, the building official makes decisions, but he certainly should and has, you know, that. David Alder's done that. As I think everybody knows, the Fuge- the, the Fuges have also retained, uh, technical engineer consultants and, and there's been dialogue with those. And one of the things we've attempted to do is to, you know, try to make sure their concerns are addressed and that what ends up being built, uh, you know, to finish up the home is, you know, safe and hopefully meets code and, and does all those things. However, you know, uh, you know, uh, we, we've added some new appeals filed by the Fuges. Uh, one of the appeals they have filed is based on the issuance of an extension of the certificate of occupancy. They don't believe that is a proper or legal, uh, step by the city. And, uh, uh, that's obviously one issue that we're looking at. And, you know, as, as a city, we have various avenues for these appeals. One is through the, if it's a building code issue, then it goes to the, uh, Board of Appeals under the building code. If it's a land use issue, then it typically goes to the planning commission. So they filed some new appeals. We are, uh, you know, going to handle those, just like we have all the others, and, uh, have the proper bodies make the decisions. We're also to a point where we believe we have, or will very shortly have, uh, final plans for the remaining work that needs to be done by the Adams. Uh, we've received plans from their engineer of record, uh, and those have been reviewed by David Alder. Uh, there were, there's been some back and forth where David Alder has required additional information. Uh, again, trying to do our job, which is be the body that makes those decisions and makes them properly. And there's been some back and forth and we have, uh, you know, which is, in my experience, not always done, but we, we have engaged in dialogue with the, the technical people that Fuges have hired. Because again, our goal is not to complete anything or do anything other than to try to, to properly regulate the, the building of the, on the Adams' property according to the codes and the, uh, standards that are provided either by state law or by uniform codes, this is the building code, which is a state law, or by, uh, city ordinances. Obviously, we're not making everybody happy. Uh, we can't, frankly, you can't sort of do that in this kind of a situation. I wish we could. We did make, have some efforts to try to reach as much consensus as we have. And, and, and we have taken into account everything that's been provided. But additional, uh, appeals continue to be filed. But I think we are hopefully nearing the end of this situation where either, you know, the building can then, if it meets the proper codes that are approved by the city, the remaining work that needs to be done can be done and properly completed. Now, you know, well, before last week, when it started snowing, I was very optimistic that could happen before the end of the year. But, you know, Utah is a very unpredictable state when it comes to snow. And sometimes it stays dry for weeks during the winter, and sometimes you get a lot of snow. Some of this work, uh, I don't believe can be prosecuted until there's no snow on the ground and there's a certain amount of less of, uh, uh, soil moisture, particularly the, uh, the landscaping, which is, when I say landscaping, I'm really, uh, talking about, uh, the drainage plan, uh, that's been submitted. And as my understanding, and Corbin can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, or Corbin can, I should say, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, uh, does not, uh, allow any drainage in addition to what's naturally occurring onto the Fuges' property. So that's a little bit of, of where we're at. I wish we were through this process. It's been a long and difficult and expensive process. Again, we try to make sure we recognize everybody's rights in this process. I guess I need to be a bit, a little bit careful what I say in the public meeting, because I have a, unfortunately, uh, the Fuges took exception to my comments at the last public meeting and have notified the Utah State Bar that they feel like I've made false statements in a public meeting. I don't agree with that, but that's. that's, I'm, you know, that's just an aside. That's not really anything that's hap- I've had that happen before. Fortunately, I've never had any. I think I have a pretty sterling record with the bar and I've never had any real, uh, anything happen to my bar record, but again, I have to respond to that. So that's, so I am kind of being a little bit careful about what I'm saying because I certainly don't enjoy having to respond to the bar in that sort of a way. It's not something, something I typically do. I think there was been one other time in my whole, and that was dismissed, sort of like, uh, that, that complaint was dismissed, but people, you know, if they feel like attorneys, and I'm an attorney, obviously, they feel like attorneys have uh, violated the rules of ethics, which are pretty serious and we take, I take very seriously, then they, that's certainly not, again, like filing appeals, that's a, that's a body that, that, that they can appeal to or, or file a complaint with and, and that's what they've done. So, um, again, that's, that's, I'm not going to, my response, that's on my time. It's my part of my ethical responsibility to the bar. And it's not something the city needs to be involved with, other than if something were to happen, I'd let you know as far as anything adverse to my ability to practice as a lawyer, but you know, fortunately I'm in my, I've been doing this about 38 years and, and so far I've stayed, pretty much stayed out of trouble. So, any questions that the ci- the city council has or the mayor has, uh, about these issues?
I have one question. My mic's on.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Into it. All right. Um, one question that has been brought up by our residents is a little over a year ago, there was a complaint filed with the ombudsman office of the state and there was a report issued that we received just a little over a month ago. Can you explain that to our residents? Um, we know that it's a non-binding report, but we don't always feel that probably the information that was given to the state was the, the entire, um, picture of, of what was going on. And so how does that relate? We're trying to explain that to the residents and maybe you have a better way to explain it to us as we go for in our, forth in our communication.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a very good question. Thank you for asking that. Yeah, we, uh, you know, uh, this is, I guess it was probably about 15 or 20 years ago. Uh, the state legislature, uh, decided that it would be helpful to have what is known as a private property ombudsman and created that office that's funded by the state of Utah. And, uh, we don't have a single private property ombudsman, but there's attorneys and some are not all, not all trained, but there's a staff that fulfill that role. Uh, the, the role of the private property ombudsman, as you would expect from the title, is to, uh, to help private property owners and navigate through situations such as eminent domain where either a government or a utility is, uh, taking some of their property without their consent. That's what eminent domain is, is or condemnation is sometimes not. Help people, you know, understand and navigate that process and what their rights are. And another, uh, part of the ombudsman's office is, uh, to help citizens navigate through land use regulations and that's what this one comes under. Again, it's land use regulations can be complex. They could be confusing. And again, the ombudsman's office is to try to help both educate, facilitate, uh, you know, people that are involved in those processes. So, uh, if you're involved in either one of those processes, uh, you can, uh, request various types of assistance from the private property ombudsman. One of the services the private property ombudsman provides is a, what's called a ombudsman opinion, where you can, uh, ask the ombudsman to give a non-binding opinion on a topic that is related to either eminent domain or land use that you're facing. In fact, you know, I, there is, and the, the opinions can either be done by staff members there or sometimes people would like to have an outside attorney, do that. And I'm actually on the panel that the private property ombudsman's office has, and in the past I have written opinions for the private property ombudsman. The downside of using an outside attorney is then the parties have to pay for that. Because I don't, you know, I'm not paid for by the state. State doesn't pay me and I don't work in that office. Uh, but the, but the, the fugus did, uh, uh, raise a question. I did, as I said before, and this is, I gotta be again, careful what I said because this is exactly what my bar complaint is related to from the fugus is, is they claim, you know, you know, I don't want to get into that, but, uh, we certainly have the opinion and we looked at it. We, we, there's areas that I'm not sure the private property ombudsman fully understood uh, the whole circumstance. We did try to provide information to the private property ombudsman when they were making the opinion and when they were doing the research. Uh, the opinion says what it says. One of the things I think that is important to understand when the private properties, ombudsman's opinion that, uh, is the private property ombudsman came to the conclusion that, you know, is not appropriate if, if we were to try to go backwards in time and to, uh, require like the, the building to be altered, the house to be altered as far as like its height. For example, one of the areas of, uh, the fugus have alleged that is a violation of the zoning, which again, there's a difference of opinion on that is they believe the house next door to them is too tall. Well, there's a doctrine which the ombudsman recognized called zoning a stop, which basically says, you know, once, uh, if something's been built and it's got to approve by the city or whoever's regulating it, uh, it's, you know, that protects people from the city going back and said, you know, I mean, you could go back into any building, even years later and say, well, your building doesn't comply with the code, so you're going to, with the zoning codes, so you're going to have to tear the building down. Well, as we know, that doesn't really happen much. Now, there's an exception to that estoppel if it's a life safety issue, but the height of a building, for example, isn't a life safety issue, but that was recognized in the opinion. And then again, uh, there were some other parts of the opinion that I, I don't believe, but that's again, my opinion. And again, I don't want to uh, get, you know, I'm not looking for my number two bar complaint here. Uh, it's not that much fun. So, uh, you know, we have a disagreement we, uh, with some parts of the opinion. But in essence, we have tried to, again, institute methodology since I've been involved, uh, with this, which was midstream. This was already well on its way. This whole dispute was well on its way when I got, uh, involved, but institute methodologies to try to, to do what was been my mission by, from the city that I've understood from the very day one, which is let's make sure that we don't create something that's going to be a hazard or dangerous. That's, that's, you know, bottom line for everything is, you know, we want to have a building that's safe, that people can live in and, you know, and, and not fall down on people, uh, or not do other bad things that buildings can do. And that's what we've tried to do. So, I know that's kind of a long and vague answer about the, uh, ombudsman opinion, but again, you know, while the parts of it, we agree with, there are other parts we don't agree with, but irrespective of that, you know, we have afforded, uh, the fugus, their processes they're entitled to and, you know, have we done everything right? No, I, you know, like any other legal situation, one of the things I learned very early is my legal career when I, back when I was an assistant attorney for Park City many years ago was, you know, if I had a time machine, I could solve everybody, all the legal problems because you'd go back and do things the right way. Have we done everything completely correctly? No, we haven't, but I think we've done a, a good job. Is there things we would do differently if we could do them over? Sure, there would be. Just like anybody else. I think we could look at our own lives and say, yeah, I would have done lots of things differently, but that doesn't mean that we have allowed a situation to occur that is dangerous or will become dangerous to either the occupancy, occupants of that house or the neighboring properties.
Right. Thank you. And it, is it, uh, my understanding that that is not accept, uh, that's not, um, will not be brought up in the court. It's not, it's just an opinion, but not necessarily a document that will be used binding in, um, in future.
Yeah.
Obviously we're having.
They're very clear. These are non-binding. They're just trying to help people give a second opinion, you know, it's kind of like, and you know, judges are free to make whatever decisions on the law that they feel are appropriate. And, you know, if they think something is helpful to them to make that decision, they can consider it, but they certainly are not bound to, in any sort of way to follow an ombudsman opinion or any other opinion. I mean, the whole thing about, uh, when you're in a litigation situation, both sides are telling the judge what they think the judge should do. Uh, that's how the system works, but that doesn't mean the judge is going to do what either one say, or, you know, could be anything in the middle or even something unexpectedly because that's the judge's job.
And how many outstanding, um, um, legal court cases do we have now? Do we still just have the two that have been combined or we have this third that you've talked about or?
There's one, it's still, I've got a copy of it here. Um, there's actually a third and a fourth ones to the, but these are still administrative appeals that are not in the courts. One is the, uh, is an appeal, uh, to the, uh, IBC or the, the appeal board under the building code. Another one is to the Woodland Hills Appeal Authority. And they cover basically the same topics, which is, focuses on the certificate of occupancy and, uh, and, uh, but the temporary certificate of occupancy that's been extended and also focuses on what they believe to be, uh, mandatory land use regulations and can, what they call confirm life safety issues. And, and claim that we have no plans for the structure being occupied, which unfortunately I know that we do have plans for the structure, but anyway, that's, you know, that's certainly their right to make those, file those appeals and make those allegations. And that's the two, that's the two new steps I'm aware of. And I don't know, Jody, is there anything else? Am I missing something? But I think those are the two new ones.
It's my understanding that there are two with the city, but then there are a couple with the fourth district court, one with the, is it the Utah Supreme Court? Craig?
Uh, yeah, no, that's right. And, you know, and we are having outside counsel. I'm not handling any of the court cases. Uh, we're insured for these kind of cases by the, uh, I think we're in, aren't we in Irma? Is that the group we're involved with?
No, the Utah.
Utah Local Government's Trust.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I said the wrong one. Utah Low, U- Utah Local Government's Trust and they're providing our defense. And, uh, we haven't been, we've been, we have, we've been served with a, we haven't been served with any new ones yet, but I have heard there are some coming.
And that's my understanding as well.
And, uh, you know, the, the case before the Supreme Court is, uh, is one that we weren't directly involved in, if I'm remembering the right case. But it was in one that the Court of Appeals, uh, ruled on, and I think they have asked for the Supreme Court to review that. Involving, that was kind of the original case between the fugus and the Adams regarding the house, which, uh, the court ruled in favor of the Adams and that was affirmed by the Utah Court of Appeals, which also, uh, is required that the Adams pay the attorney's fees, I'm sorry, that fugus paid the attorney's fees for the Adams.
Thank you.
Other questions? You know, go ahead.
I just publicly want to say thank you to Craig and Ethan for all the work they've done. It's been money well spent, I think, on the city's side and, uh, they've given us some great counsel and advice on how to handle situations. I know it's not always been popular with, those who are asking the questions or filing the grandmas with the city, but I think they've given us some sound advice.
They're, they're helping make sure that we're doing the right thing still.
And thank you, thank you, Joe. Those are very kind words. Thank you. And, you know, one thing that I want to echo a little, but I can't remember which of your, I was listening while the, the, the council candidates were talking and yeah, there are things we need to do and as far as cleaning up our codes and clearing up some language. Um, unfortunately, most of our time has been focused on this issue. Hopefully when this is over, we can do, be more proactive because I, I do agree that there are things we can do to make a better processes for everybody and, uh, you know, that's, we've done that for others. In fact, my firm, we're doing it right now for all the townships in Salt Lake. We represent all the Salt Lake townships like Kearns, Magna, uh, Immigration Canyon on land use issues. And we're going through their land use codes right now to help clean, clean those up and, and, you know, would like to do, and we'll do the same thing for Woodland Hills because you know, one thing I, another thing I learned as a young attorney is, you know, you can, a few dollars doing things in the front end can save many, many dollars in the backend, i.e. like litigation. And so, you know, that, that's certainly something we have a goal to work with the city on us to help, uh, do those things. So, you know, to prevent, and, and you know, there's some other practice to prevent, uh, situations because, you know, nobody likes a disputed situation and it turned out to be very expensive.
And then you end up with unhappy people.
And, you know, the other thing I've learned that most people are unhappy at the end of litigation, not, not the other way around, even many times the people that are, even if they are pretty successful in it because, you know, and I always, I always counsel people. It's kind of like what Abraham Lincoln once said, to counsel, you know, you think twice before you jump into a lawsuit because uh, it's, it's a, not a fun situation. I don't know very many people that have, have ever come out of a lawsuit thinking, wow, I can't wait till my next lawsuit comes along so I can have this fun again. It just, it's just not, I mean, it's the best system we have and it's a good system. It's just, you know, it's just very taxing financially, emotionally on everybody involved.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again. Any? Sure. If it's quick. We're.
One of the findings of the ombudsman report, as I read it, is that the city did not present any material facts that they were relying on, uh, uh, what's? Procedural and, and jurisdictional grounds. That was where their argument was. And my question is, are there some material facts that, that the city are in possession of that, that because of the litigation and so forth, that they're not wanting to make public? And if not, the material facts?
No. Well, yeah, firstly, I could, I can just immediately say, no, we have not held anything back that I'm aware of and we have been very fastidious or however that word goes as to responding to, uh, grandma requests and providing everything. We have no interest in my view to, 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 to hide the ball in any sort of way.
What's the basis of the ombudsman stating that the city isn't producing any material facts?
Well, I don't, maybe the ombudsman know, but I think you could ask Jody. So we, we have literally provided hundreds and not thousands of pages of documents and we have not held anything back. I, I, you know, again, I don't, again, I wish I knew what, exactly what the ombudsman was referring to, but, uh, and then when we've had any kind of a, a proceeding, those documents have been, you know, things have been made available to everyone. I mean, we've even sent the work that David Alder sent, which we could hold back as an advisor to the city. We haven't held that back. We've, we've shared everything that he's done.
Craig, this is when. Back here for a sec. Um, I, I, am I wrong in saying, I think we're kind of puzzled about that statement from the ombudsman because we feel like we've provided material.
I mean.
Everything we had. And so we were kind of, I mean, I called, um, Craig when we got that and said, what aren't we providing? And he said, I, he's puzzled. We were all puzzled because we, we feel like we did provide material evidence. So.
I remember when I got the call from the mayor. It was actually in my car driving by the University of Utah on my way to work, which I do every day, even though I'm a, I'm, I'm a BYU fan. That's where I went to school. But I remember getting that call and I, and she asked exactly the same question. Are we, what are we holding back? And I said to the mayor, just like I'm saying now, we have not held anything back. Um, the only things that we've held back have been attorney client privilege things, things that are not subject to grandma, but as far as any facts about the building, plans, specs, uh, what actually happened there, reports, those have all been provided. And, uh, again, we have no interest in, again, the last thing we want to do is hide the ball because again, our goal is to, to make sure this building is safe. to make sure this building is safe and that it doesn't cause a problem for other properties. So I, I, I wish I understood what the ombudsman was referring to, but we have, again, and I would advise the city against holding anything back because again, that's not in our interest. Our interest is to make sure everything's out on the table.
Thanks. Good question, Joe. All right. We are almost two hours into this meeting and we had dinner first before that. So I think some of us might be in need of a few-minute break. So let's, let me give you just a five-minute break and then we'll take up with the rest of our work session.
Yeah, Chris.
All right. I'm going to call our work session back to order. We're going to just jump right into number two, the consideration of ADU accessory dwelling units, that ordinance. Hey, questions and comments? Interns.
This is talking about the.
Ordinance.
Trailers on the lots, right?
No, this is the inside, internal, the unit.
This is having a mother-in-law apartment.
I have not seen any of that document. Oh, shucks. What's that?
Should we have, should we have Wayne?
Because I really want to look at that.
We haven't heard from Wayne yet.
No. He's been silent in the back, just eating chocolate and enjoying the day.
Somebody didn't wake me up. This is a suggestion, recommendation to change our existing ordinance. What it does is lots that are on the, on the corner.
This is ADU.
Oh, you did? How come it's on the agenda? Oh, I didn't get the.
This is ADU so that we're in compliance with state statute.
So you're talking about the ADUs then?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Hey, you're here.
This ordinance has been, what we're proposing is with a few adjustments to it, the same as the city of Salem adopted for their ADU ordinance. We made a few changes to what Salem's ordinance is to better accommodate ours. For example, they have a minimum square footage of 6,000, and we changed that to 19,000 square feet because that's our smallest zone.
1,900?
19,000. R119.
Oh, for the lot size, not the pump size.
Correct. I'm sorry, for the lot size. Yes. So we also incorporated a 0.5 acre feet increase that the homeowner would have to provide to the city for water. That's essentially for interior water, not for exterior water because we don't see that as increasing, just the interior use of water.
So are you talking about water rights?
Correct.
Okay.
So if a person wants to have an ADU as part of their residential structure, they will need to provide an additional point, four or five acre feet of water to the city to, to get approval for that ADU.
And where would they get that?
It's my question.
Hey, buy it on the open market. We've had several individuals just recently, within the last two or three weeks here in the city, have acquired water rights that they've provided to the city for developments, which they're doing. And so the water's available out there. It's not readily available, but it is available. They would have to acquire it from somebody who does have water.
There are lots of different levels of quality, or whatever you want to call it, for water rights. Are we specifying that, that they have to have a certain level of quality, or just any old water rights will do?
In essence, any old water rights will do. Irrigation water rights can be converted to culinary water rights. There's another issue having to do with water rights, which is the class of water. Usually the older the class, or the older the water right, it's a first class, so it takes precedent. But we don't make that distinction with water rights coming to the city.
And Corbin, you had some.
You have to talk with a mic.
The responsibility of the, of the conveyance of water is on the individual. So once it's conveyed to the city, then it's got approval from the state to be used in the city. So you can't just buy an irrigation water right in North Salt Lake and, and have that accepted for that water right. You have to go through the process to get it transferred to Woodland Hills as the point of diversion. So it's usable here.
A state engineer has to prove it.
So that, that answers my question. Thank you.
And then just to clarify, we're talking about this, these are people that are using, are developing, are going to use a, an accessory dwelling unit in their home, renting it out as a business, or you know, earning money. It's not like their mother-in-law's moving in and staying with them, right?
What is the current market value range on a 0.4 or 5 acre feet? Is it a few hundred dollars or a few thousand dollars?
It'd be several thousands of dollars.
Several thousand. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. You had it on here that you have to register with the city and pay a fee, which would be based on the fee schedule. And then you would also need to have a permit for inspection to make sure that the dwelling is safe. I mean, it's not to look around the rest of your house and say, boy, boy, you're out of compliance with everything. It's to make sure that rental is, is a safe place for whoever rents it.
Correct. There's certain code requirements that they have to meet.
We will have a fee schedule for both. There will be, it will be double fee, one fee to register and one fee to inspect. Or is it a one-time fee to inspect and then an ongoing application fee based on a yearly business license?
Yes, the latter.
And those, those inspection fees are, those inspections are required by the state. Those are not something we're adding. It's something that the state is requiring.
And then I'm forgetting, I mean, we have number H, which we don't, we, we, you put within a mobile home. I thought that was sort of weird considering we don't have any mobile homes, but I think we should update that when we have our discussion on exterior ADUs, you know, going forward, since there have been proposals of all sorts of dwellings to be used. So just keep that in mind. But was there something, I might have missed it on parking? Because that is, I couldn't remember where that was. Oh yeah, number F. So they have to have parking on the property, not on the street, that a come, that, so some people may have to pour additional slabs to have this additional parking to, to qualify for the ADU.
Correct. Yes.
So overall, as a business opportunity now, as an ADU, you will have a fee to register, a fee for inspection, and maybe possibly some upgrades to your property to make sure that it is in compliance with parking and safety.
Correct.
All right. Now, with that, part of it is registering is that we have to show the state that we have, not that we have ADUs that are actually being used, but that we have an opportunity for a percentage of our city to be, allow ADUs. But we're saying that anyone in our city, 100% of our city could, could, if they wanted, provide an ADU if they meet these requirements.
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure we're checking the boxes.
Now, I might add to that. Summit Creek, for example, and I don't know if they will change this, but part of their CCNRs do not allow an ADU. But that's up to them, however they want to treat that.
Yes, the state can override HOA rules.
But that's something that we don't get involved with. We don't force it on anyone. The allowance is there for people to have it.
I mean, like the state just recently disallowed cities from, from dictating exterior materials on homes, right?
Correct. Yes.
Except for we do have an exception with wildland interface ordinances, that there are certain things that we can exclude. But if you have an HOA, you can still say you have to have this color or this things because you are an HOA. But if the state deems it a matter of, of this housing issue that they have, they can override everybody.
In the absence of an HOA, you could have, you could have CCNRs for a subdivision without an HOA.
Not without a governing body to enforce them. No.
Well, you can have them.
You can have them, but nobody's going to enforce them.
Then it becomes an issue between property owner and property owner.
Yep, civil matter. Yep.
Can I ask, why the water right?
Because additional water would be used. As a business.
If I was going to rent my basement, I wouldn't be renting it because I wanted to do a business. I would be renting it because I needed the money. So it would be hard for me to come up with the money for the water right. I'm just trying to think of people that rent. If I was to rent my basement, it would only be because I needed the money.
But wouldn't you forward that water requirement onto the renter to pay for their water? Well, you might do it over time, right? But if you were going to rent from anywhere else, you pay for your water.
So do other cities have the same requirement? Is this a standard requirement?
Not necessarily for ADUs. For example, Salem does not have additional requirement.
Depends on what, how much culinary water you have.
And Salem is going to be participating with, with irrigation water, which our city will not. We will continue to use our culinary water for irrigation purposes. But the 0.4 or 5 acre feet, normally when a new home is built, they have to provide 0.90 acre feet of water to the city for that home. We're suggesting we require half of that if somebody wants to establish an ADU in their home for the increased water usage.
So let, let me ask a question. What would happen if we didn't have this requirement? What would it, what, what risk would the city have? What, what challenges might we have?
As, as it's an increased use of water likely to have, it ebbs and flows. When you have a new household and you may have five children and parents, over time, those children leave, likely the water use is going to decrease in that particular home. But you could have tenants that would move in that would increase that water use. We are limited to a certain amount of water by the state of Utah. And so we run the risk possibly of exceeding that approved water use as the water use increases in that particular home.
That, that, that makes sense, but, I'm sorry, there's, and it's a big capital but, with our boomerang society, we are having children return home with their spouses and our grandchildren. And we may end up having 12 people live in our home for over two and a half years.
Maybe.
You're just making this up, Bob.
So we don't have a mechanism to support that type of thing either.
That's correct.
And I think also we have the idea that not all of these ADUs will be rented to a full-on family. A lot of them would be to couples and/or maybe some widows that don't want to leave their homes but love to stay in Woodland Hills. And so I'm a little one, I'm wondering about that, the difference in, in having to bring in the water rights versus to installing a second meter to meter how much water is being used. And then maybe if it exceeds a certain amount, we do a tiered water rate based on the route. What? A, a second water meter for the ADU specific, so we would be able to tell if it was exceeding what went on. I don't know, just a thought. Well, would that be more expensive than buying water rates?
When we approve a building permit, aren't we already establishing the usage of water to the payment rate of water?
Yeah.
Whether you have, whether you're a retired couple or a family of 15? Yeah.
I mean, is there a possibility that in this ADU, a, a tribe of 50 people could move in? Yeah, that's a possibility. Very unlikely and probably not to be a person.
Yeah. Consider, we don't allow short-term rentals. So, and that is a consideration on that.
I, I will say that having talked to some of the mayors around in the larger cities, that they believed when they started doing the ADUs, it would be like young couples and widows and, but they have found in reality, it's full-on families. That, that, so, so we are putting, so we are effectively in a lot of these homes doubling.
The water use.
I mean, that's what, you know, they, they said they've been surprised to see that it has been more families than it has been generally, you know. Anyway, so I'm just, I haven't communicated with Wayne or pressed for that, but I'm just saying, that's some of the feedback I've gotten in some of the meetings I've been.
So we have a requirement of a minimum, right? A minimum square feet?
Of water or?
No, of housing.
Of housing.
Acre feet of.
No, we're talking about square, square footage of a home that can be rented out.
There's no minimum.
So they could rent one room versus the whole basement?
Right.
As an ADU.
I was just trying to see if there was something in my mind that we could.
I, I know people that they rent because they have to. They don't have a choice. They cannot afford to go and buy these water rights. They have one person living in their basement. It's a lot.
Good, good question, Janet.
So I have a few comments. So number one, my first thought is, a thing that is as an event unlikely over a long period of time can become likely. So us running out of water would be catastrophic for the city. We have to maintain water for the city. So my thought is, if, can we have something like, look, if you've got so many bodies in that unit with the ADU and the, the house itself, then it kicks in that we need, of course, that's, that's.
I just thought of something. We already have our tiered water rate. So if they go too high, the property owner would have to be paying for it, which they could then, as their renter, say, hey.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't necessarily create our rights.
Sorry, I just had one more comment before I forget. So that's a big deal. We can't run, we can't run out of water. Now, on the other hand, oh shoot, I lost that thought. I'm sorry. I'll try to remember. Wayne, you had your head up, then I'll try to come back to it.
We can charge more for water, but we can't use water.
Beyond the limit that the state is, allows us to use. We can charge more to cut back on, on use if, if that's an avenue to pursue.
I think.
I remember, I'm sorry, I remember and I'm going to lose it again. Is 0.4 or 5 too much? Because you, you said that the 0.9 is for somebody who moves in. That's exterior and interior. So if we do half, are we, are we kind of assuming that it's exterior as well, where we say we don't need more exterior? Maybe it's less than 0.4 or 5 would be adequate.
A quarter instead of a half.
Yeah.
Your water use right, your water use right now is 0.35 acre feet for indoor use and 0.55 for outdoor use. So maybe the 0.4 or 5 should go to 0.35 if all you're counting is additional indoor use.
Or 0.25. It's hard to say, but we're just kind of throwing numbers up in the air without having any metrics in place to determine if that's actually even.
Except for that is a metric. 0.35 is, is the average use.
I understand.
I, I, back into my scenario of make-believe of 12 people, your, your water rate does go up over $300 a month.
So that hopefully will.
That, that's data. That's data, empirical data.
Mayor, can I make a comment relative to parking?
Yes.
Yeah, my comment is, relative to parking, is there any way that parking could be limited to passenger car vehicles? If an ADU is rented to a truck driver and there's enough land on the property to park his semi-truck? Or if he's in the business of construction and he brings in a bulldozer and a backhoe? And is there any way we could limit this to passenger car vehicles being parked?
No, we do not.
I don't, and we have people that are construction that have that equipment on their property now.
We have some complaints in right now about that.
Yeah, but that's, but, yeah, so we don't have... Yeah, right now, we're not regulating homeowners, so we're talking about, do we regulate ADU?
As a business. So is there a difference between residential and business? Because your ADU, if you're charging rent, it's a business.
I just really believe in, this is a strong kiss mentality, that we need to approach it.
I agree. Because we're little, we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of people to go out and check compliance and run a bunch of numbers and...
And I just think that we're over-engineering, over-complexing a process that in some ways, I believe, is self-regulating in that... And it already is, yes.
I think if we have the permit, the registration and the permit, and that we've deemed it safe, and they're renting...
And the value of our system is that as Wayne, I mean, sorry, as Corbett monitors our water usage and we determine that we start to have some issues, we can change this. And so I really believe it needs to be as simple as possible.
And it can only be one ADU per household. They can't rent to five rooms to five different people and have that be their business, one ADU per parcel. So I think that also limits to who comes in.
So that's my point.
You already have issues.
With water usage, yeah. So that chart that you showed me doesn't say what we think it says?
Well, but there's a difference between water, wet water and paper water. So we have a lot of approved lots that aren't using water. That water that is allocated is being used already.
And we also have to keep a certain amount of water on hand for firefighting activities.
Well, now you're talking about, that's wet water.
Now you're talking about wet water as a reserve in the tank. But there's a difference between water right and wet water. They're not the same. So you can pull enough water out of the ground to serve everybody, but you don't have a right to use that water. And that's where we get in trouble with the state.
They only allocate based on...
You're already beyond that as far as per capita because you're using water that is already allocated for vacant lots to serve the people that are here.
Overuse.
I mean, so, I mean, I think, I think what Bob said as well expressed that right now, we're okay and we ought to move forward, but then we ought to revisit it if it needs to be revisited. But I think that we need to, I think what Corbett's saying is, we need to say, if every lot that's been approved at this point was built on, do we have enough water rights for that? And if we don't, then I do think it's foolish and reckless. My recommendation is that it would be foolish and reckless for us to allow a lot more ADUs without getting more...
Problem to fix it, or do we fix it prior to the problem?
Yeah, and I think we probably...
And Corbett's saying we have a problem right now.
My thoughts on that is, is that I think that we're, and again, without some data, it's hard to make any real decisions. But theoretically, it could be that we're trying to get one group of people to solve a larger problem. And is that base going to be enough to solve the problem? Or do we really need to step back on the water and say, okay, what do we need to do from a system level to make sure that we're not using water that is dedicated for undeveloped lots?
Is this what you want to show us, your chart, Corbett? Okay, never mind, sorry.
So we did the same, we did that when the State Center was built. I don't know if you remember. But the church at the Roundabout was using 6.7 acre feet, average 6.7 acre feet since it had been, since the building had been built. We only required 2.7, three ERCs or equivalent residential connections. So when the State Center was built, it was reevaluated. The church conveyed the additional water for the Roundabout building and conveyed the same amount of water for the State Center. But you have that same issue with residential use. We've just not dialed it in yet.
But my point is, is, is ADU the right place to try to fix the water issue? Or do we just need to do it across the whole system and make adjustments wherever we can? And I don't know what those adjustments can or ought to be, but I'm just wondering if we need to step back and look at it collectively between the ADUs and new development and existing homes and whatever else options we might have.
And water usage.
Mm-hmm. That's all part of it.
Will continue to use until it hurts, and if maybe our...
Some people, it's not gonna hurt.
Right, well, that's true. That is true.
So, but my understanding is, we're only trying to repair the damage, some use of that term loosely, the damage being done to the system by the ADU ordinance. So because that ADU ordinance is gonna tax the system more, we've gotta fix that, is what I'm understanding. But to your point, Bob, I agree that if we're discovering that our system's already overtaxed, then we ought to address that.
So don't we have a person that represents us for water rights somehow, somebody?
No, that's a property owner's, when you bring it.
Sunba? Yes?
Well, no, I thought we had somebody that had, but he did, okay.
So I'm...
Well, we've hired Riley Water, Logan Riley with Riley Water, to evaluate our water right situation, our paper water situation, and that's all.
Your attorney's a special advisor. In water rights, up in Salt Lake.
Yeah.
So would it be an option, could we lower the water requirement? And do you know where the fiber residents were able to kind of do like a payment on their bill? A little bit or something? I just don't see some of these people coming up with a...
Well, they don't buy the water from us. They buy it from the broker.
Right.
So that's the issue. We don't want to be the bank, and so you buy the water. The water brokers are all over the place, and they look every day and buy up water from farmers or leans on property or somebody who died. So you go to them, you purchase it.
Can I make a recommendation? Because this is almost an exact rehash of a couple of years on this exact same ordinance. So it feels like we're just going around and around, and I think the problem is, we don't have data. So if we could actually, like, spend a month on just getting the data, like, I would like to hear a little bit more, not right now, but from Corbett on, okay, right now, we require .9 acre feet?
On new homes, on older ones, it's less.
I get that.
Okay.
But should that, to Bob's point, be 1.2 acre feet? Or should it be 1.5? But let's actually get some understanding of where do we actually fit with our water. And then we can decide whether we want to slice it between ADUs and regular homes, whatever, but...
That's right.
We're not gonna come to a conclusion here.
Right.
We're just guessing.
The one thing, though, is that we do need to come in compliance with ADU. So do we pass it without that caveat? Or, and say, well, revisit it? Or do we just say we're holding it all until we get the information?
What deadline do we have with the state for the ADUs? Is it a soft or a hard deadline? There are a lot of cities that are like us.
There's a lot of cities that are going through this process right now.
So it's a soft deadline?
It's kind of a soft deadline, because they're not, they don't have the time to go to a city and check.
And we already have some ADUs.
We have a few.
They're not gonna be angry with us.
As long as they know we're progressing.
Do we have any history of cities that have had problems? And how the state reacted when they were actively working on an ordinance versus not doing anything?
The threat of not having BNC road funds has been brought up, that they would withhold those until you're in compliance.
But that's not happening now.
That's not happening to our city, but it has happened to other cities.
We have serious issues that can give us time to do this better.
Yes.
I've got a list of them, and I just dare not go into them because I have a whole lot of concern about this. And I don't know if you want to hear them now, but we gotta resolve all these. I think I got my answer, and that is that we have some time.
We do have some time. I have one more question for Wayne. Why did you pick Shelby 30 consecutive days? Because our current ordinance for short-term rental is less than 30 days. Is that why you did that? Or because, to me, 30 days is still a short-term rental in our definition, and yet this is saying it's basically a short-term rental, which we didn't want. So why don't we have it at 60 or 90 days?
If we're staying with our current ordinance with full-term rental, which is 30 days.
I would encourage you, though, to, I would encourage the council to, when we're talking about these water rights, water's getting tighter and tighter. And so we just want to make sure that we are really being smart in future planning. Because, you know, if we say, well, we're fine for now, and when we need it later, we'll get it, we may not, it may not be very accessible later. We don't know.
So who is, is this a responsibility of the Planning Commission to determine this water, or is that somebody else?
It's you. It's you until tomorrow.
Until tomorrow at midnight? I'll take it.
No, it's really on the council. Yeah, Corbett?
Keep in mind, you know, Dave, you made the comment that you don't want to be the bank. You're going to be the bank one of these days. Because how many homes in town were under the requirement of only having, only having to provide .45 acre feet? You're going to have to make up for that one of these days. And that day is gonna come when you start building out and the people that have water allocated to their property want to start using it. And so you're gonna have to make up for that difference sooner or later. So you're, as much as you don't want to be the bank, you're going to be the bank one of these days.
Well, yeah, I think what you're talking about is the fact that at some point, we are going to have to buy more water shares, and I get that. What I don't want to do is, I don't want to be the bank for residents that need to buy water shares and us give them a loan and then have to worry about payments and that kind of thing.
But when I was in Elk Ridge, and that wasn't that long ago, one of the council members bought a bunch of water, or convinced the city council to buy a bunch of water from Sunwa. And they bought like 105 acre feet. It was already in the area, it was already transferable. They made over a million dollars on that 105 acre. Just because of opportunity. Yes, well, they sold most of it to developers. Because if the water is here, and you've already gone through the process, or you've bought water that is already here, you talk about zoning and changing the zoning before the developer wants to build high-density housing or whatever. Sorry, don't shoot me. But if you already have the water here and a developer wants to buy the water from you, you take advantage of the market. Now, you're not in the business to maybe, oh, you have an opportunity like that to buy water. You're not gonna die on the vine.
And so we just need to delegate it out to the right group or person or whatever, and let them work it and give them some sort of timeline to report back.
I remember the days when we didn't have water, and we had to go shower at the State Center because we didn't have water.
No wonder they use so much water.
And that was time to go for a lot of, there was a lot of issues at the time. But there was a group of citizens who, if they wouldn't have been proactive in buying water rights at that time, we wouldn't be where we are right now. And so I think we do need to be proactive in looking for opportunities to buy water because it is like gold in this state. And it's important for us to make sure that we have adequate water for the build-out of our city. Not just for the residents who live here, but for the build-out of our city. And that is something that needs to be looked at.
That goes to the mayor's point, is that this is something that's probably better to do now rather than later. And so we just need to figure out how much it is we need to do. Is it an apple or an elephant?
And water has to pay for water, and that's another issue that adds to the complexity.
Can I ask, we've got Mark Sobin on, he's had a lot of experience in water.
Yes.
Mark, do you have any additional thought or advice? Unmute.
And show your face.
If he's still on.
There's a Mark there, but I don't know if that's Mark Sobin.
That's me. I'm here.
Yay, we can hear you. We can hear you, Mark. Thanks.
Yeah, I kind of listened to the conversation a little bit. First off, first thing I'd like to say is, you're talking about 4.5, and 4.5, .45 acre feet is about 15,000 gallons a month on average per year. You know, that's the equivalent of 10 showers a day, a lot of teeth brushing, you know, maybe filling up a swimming pool or two. So, you know, that, you just kind of wanted to put an actual number that stood out to everybody as to how much .45 acre feet is. I know Corbett talked about, our current status is 3.5. That's probably gonna be a little bit closer to what an average household is going to use. Not household, a single household is going to use without outdoor use, so that may be something you want to consider. I know there's a lot of talk about water rights and everything. You know, water rights, I know that Riley Water had did a study, and I believe Wayne wrote a report on that. You know, showed where, right now, we're in pretty good shape for water. We still need to be asking developers for new development to bring water with them. But we do have enough water for our current build-out, if I remember the report right. But that's only paper water. Actual water is going to be what actual water is. And unless we monitor that, we're, you know, we're not gonna have an accurate idea what our future water's going to look like, especially with the weather doing what it's been doing over the last few years. Another point that Corbett brought up, which is an excellent point. Well, when I was the district manager, yeah, excuse me, not district manager, but, yeah, district manager down in Grand County, the district had actually purchased a bunch of water rights, and we actually used those as part of the impact fee for development. So instead of asking them to say, hey, bring your own water, we actually included that in the impact fee development. I don't know that the city's in a position to do that right now, but if Elk Ridge did that, they made a very good move in the past. So anyway, so there's a lot of things to consider, but I just wanted to say that, you know, .45 is a lot of water for indoor use.
Mark, would you think .25 would be more accurate, a half of that?
Well, what we could do, I mean, just as a suggestion, maybe take a look at the winter time usage bills, water bills, you know, just pull a couple of dozen out of the hat and look at what the indoor water uses, water usage is for, say, November, December and January over the last four or five years, and kind of get an average number of what's being used and base it on that, rather than say, you know, just 4.45 or .35 or whatever, and say, what we're looking at is, you know, maybe, you know, I'll just give you an example. There's four of us in our house. I'm using about 5,000 gallons a month on my bill, indoor use. So that might be just something to do, is say, yeah, you know, and then put a slush factor in there of, you know, 15 or 20% or whatever you wanted to do. But I think I would at least get an idea of what indoor usage is now before we actually just come up with an actual number. You guys still there?
Yeah. We're just processing wise words. Exactly.
Can't you hear our brains going?
Ted says that they do have that number in their report, so we might want to refresh our memories.
Ted Mickelson?
Uh-huh, he's on the call.
Thank you.
So Ted, maybe you can resend that to us, so it's at the top of our emails, and we can look at that.
And another thing is, you could just have your billing department take a look at the bills for the last little while. Just pull some out of the hat and just go down the list for, you know, like I said, the last four or five years and see what we're using. That would be, you know... and, and see what we're using. That would be, you know, Ted's number in my, that may have been how Ted got his number, but that would be a, a real simple way to do it.
Yeah, what we did is we took the, um, we took the entire, every water user over the course of a year and averaged out their water use based on their metered water use and came up with the actual number of indoor and outdoor use. So we just put out our, uh, just, I just sent Corbett today, our draft water master plan and basically has all that information in it. So we can send it as a reminder or you're welcome. I can send you the draft water master plan as well.
Sounds good. That would be much better, much better than just an arbitrary number.
Yeah.
But it's not far off that, that number.
Thanks Ted.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Okay.
And Mark too.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Um. And I think, okay, so. Oh boy, I'm going to get in trouble. No, no, no. Look, we've, we had this discussion two years ago regarding ADUs. Maybe the timing was bad. The state is now kind of forcing our hands. However, I do think it's important that specifically Doral, who was, felt really strongly against some of the regulation of ADUs, um, gets a chance to have his questions answered. So my recommendation would be that, um, when it comes to this, that we table it at least for this month and we assign Doral to get his questions answered. Now whether they solve his, his issues or not, that's a whole other issue. But he at least needs to have the chance to ask his questions. And then the second thing would be that we take a look at both what Ted is providing from a water perspective and then also Corbett's input, um, and also Wayne's because Wayne's done a lot of work with the water as well. And we try to narrow down or figure out this water shares conveyance issue. And if we can do that in a month, then we can be prepared at the next council meeting to vote on this.
And I'll ask if any other cities are doing something similar. I mean, we've had this after Salem, which didn't need to do it, but I'll ask some of the other cities that are small cities to see if they're.
And I've been reading a lot of other cities ordinances on this issue.
Mm-hmm.
And there are things in there such as permission from the neighbors to have a rental. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff. You might, you, you might. Uh, the other thing I would demand almost is we've got to have a public hearing before we put a new ordinance in. And I didn't see that anywhere in the plan, but I, I need that. You remember what happened last public hearing?
They did have a public hearing on it.
I want one for the council. I want our, I want the citizens to come and tell us that this ordinance is, it's the best we can do and that, and that they're satisfied with it.
Yeah, we, the thing is, and.
Especially if you're going to inspect their homes. That's, that's critical.
Only, the, the inspection only comes with their permission because they apply with the city to have an ADU. Nobody expects it until they apply.
I got a whole lot of questions about that, but, but if you're going to inspect their homes anytime about an ADU, if their sewer quits working, if anything goes awry and you're going to, you, you got to have a public hearing. That's, that's by the council.
I don't, I'm not coming down on public hearing or not. The only thing is, and just from the last experience, there's an awful lot of what I would call FUD about this issue. And again, I, I, I'll say this again, the state is forcing our hand.
Yeah, we're a political subject.
It is, it is, but it's not forcing us to do something that hurts us in the long run. Water, sewer, you know, you don't have a sewer down there in Salem. You don't have septic tanks everywhere. You know, there's all kinds of considerations. And, and what I love about our city right now is we've left it alone. People have rentals and I'm not going to kick them out. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's a smooth operation right now. And so perhaps the only thing we need to do is remove one sentence from our ordinance that says no rentals. I'm good with that, you know?
But then we wouldn't be in compliance and we would lose our B and C road funds, which is.
You wouldn't be in compliance if you allowed rentals. Come on. You, you allow ADUs? I'm okay with that.
Then just take the sentence out.
Take it out of our existing ordinance. It does say no, it says no rentals. I read the section.
As a.
And it's a very short place to rip out. So. So you're going to add a bunch of stuff that, that, that I have an issue with, especially without a public hearing before I vote. But that's enough for now. Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
And I would think, um, if, if you do a public hearing, uh, we need to make sure we get, um, good education before it.
I want a Utah senator to come in here and tell us.
Well, and, but I mean.
Let him explain to our citizens what they did.
Yeah, I, well, I would like the, um, citizens.
That's exactly what I want.
To understand what they're commenting on.
And I would like them to walk from the start of Woodland Hills Drive so that they can see just what it would take for someone who doesn't have transportation to make it up to Woodland Hills.
Well, so, so I have actually, um, whenever I talk to, um, people from the state that are either UDOT or, or senators or representatives, whether they represent us or not. And I say to them, it's crazy for you to make a lot of demands for accessible housing in our city without throwing a lot of money for public transportation and that's a waste of the state's money. We, you know, and so unless you're going to combine it with a lot of UTA money or UDOT money, it, you know, it's crazy for you to require us to provide a lot of housing for people that can't afford to get here and out.
Maybe the state can subsidize scooters.
But, um, yeah.
Electric bikes were with us.
But before we do a public hearing though, I really think people need to understand what the issue is so that they don't, um.
That's true.
Say a bunch of stuff that, that's inapplicable and then they're frustrated.
I really agree with that. And that's hard, that's where we got to cover some of that ignorance that I even have on this topic.
Right.
Well, and part of, part of compliance with the state is also just having the ability to allow it. It doesn't mean that anyone has to choose to do it.
I know.
And so as long as you can say, we have allowed it for this percentage of our community. And if a homeowner never calls and never says they want to do it, then we're okay because our ordinance says they're allowed to do it. They choose not to and that's not on us.
So, okay. All right. We got to move on. Let's see. The next thing is fencing. So Wayne, this is where we're actually talking about fencing.
This is another.
Amending the ordinance for the R119 zone. R119, yes, R119 zone.
Last time it was presented to the council, you asked that the planning commission take a look at it again. And, uh, we have, and, uh, we're, we're suggesting one change to what was originally made. And that change is that the fencing not be allowed forward from the front of the house. So that there's an openness in the front yard essentially. But, um, that, I know there was concern with, uh, with, uh, wildlife corridors and whatnot. Less of fences more than six feet tall. The deer are going to jump it anyway. But we felt that, uh, we all felt comfortable and it was a unanimous vote to only allow, uh, to not allow fences past the front of the house. So.
So everything on here up to number 10 is the only new part of that?
Correct. There was a number six, I think, that we clarified a little bit more about, uh, uh, fences not, uh, obstructing the view on, uh, on corner lots. That was reworded a little bit, but that was already there. So the, the, the major change is the, um, not allowing fences forward from the front of the house.
I have one question on number nine. No barbed wire, uh, strand wire or chain link fences approved for use. In our wildland interface ordinances, we don't allow vinyl on homes. So because of the fire, do, would that apply also to a fencing material because it does burn so much faster? So is that part of that ord, that wildland interface ordinance or as a, as a prohibited use? Or what, what would we say on that?
We did not look at that specifically as a fire hazard, uh, to eliminate, um, vinyl fences from, um, from being considered.
Do you have an opinion on that, Doral or Craig? Craig's on.
I, I would. I'll get with Wayne on some of it. I, I mean, it's not going to be a concern down there. Um.
Well, this is for the whole city, not just down there.
No.
Yeah, but.
It's R119 without an overlay zone.
Yeah. And, and we just had a chicken coop fire that was right against the vinyl fence. And the fire, the, the only part of the fence that burnt was right at the chicken coop. So it did not spread the flame.
Okay.
And I think, um, when we were going through this years ago, talking about home, homes, there's a difference between what you have to do to keep your home safe for your home, but also to keep your home from spreading fire to the rest of the city. Um, if somebody's, I mean, somebody's fence is generally not going to catch on fire unless everything around it's already on fire. And which case, I mean, don't you think Craig? We're not as worried.
I, I totally agree with that.
We're not as worried about fire danger from a fence as we are from fire danger from the actual home because.
No, not from the structure.
Okay. All right. Um, so do you guys have any questions or concerns that we need to address before we?
So I'm just going to mention this. My big concern is I, I, I recall Robert Nelson when he came into the planning commission meeting essentially saying that we are changing this entire ordinance for one person. There's like one person who wants to build a fence on his property down there. And.
So far.
I get that, but I'm just, again, it goes back to what is the character and nature of our city?
Mm-hmm.
And do we really want to be changing ordinances for one person? So.
Well, and I believe that we are, we are seeing that we need to address the fencing ordinance for the entire city. Um, this is one section and they're doing it based on the zoning of this one particular development. But it's obvious that we're going to have to address, um, the fencing ordinance overall because of maybe potential legal action.
I don't believe that we do need to readdress it. I know of one person who just didn't read it. And so, but that's a different issue.
I, I think you're right, Dave.
Anyway.
I agree.
You don't change.
So, so where do we go with your comment? I'm sorry, I, uh.
Where do you go with it? I don't know. I just, I'm just saying, I'm not sure that I, I'm at, I'm not at a point where I want to change the fencing ordinance, even for R119.
So it would stay all the same except for number 10, which is the back and side yards. So not go against it. The rest, one through nine is already in place for the city as a whole.
What, what, what I'm hearing Dave say is he's not comfortable with taking any action on this.
What about number three?
Well, Wayne told us that this.
What about number three?
Those are not in place.
Oh, they're not in.
No.
I thought you said they were.
No, he just said.
This was in place from the previous recommendation.
Oh, from the previous recommendation.
That we made to you to change the fencing ordinance for R119 with no overlay. So that is a change. All that is a change to our fencing ordinance.
I, I think that Dave has a really good point. However, that development is just really getting started. And I think we're going to see as people move in, plant yards, start having outdoor activities, we may see some differences in the number of, uh, fence, uh, requests.
Well, and, and, I mean, I think I really am comfortable with our fencing ordinance, but there have been a lot of times that I've been driving down 11200 and have wished that, Woodland Shadows could have fences. Because I think it, some of those yards are unattractive because it's big spaces of just, they're not in the woods.
Yeah.
So it's just weeds. And, you know, and, um, so I think we're going to be looking at that in some of this new development down where Robert Nelson is, is that it, they're just flat lots with no trees. And so I, I mean, I feel differently about what's going on down there on the flat than I do about up in the woods. So I think it's worth evaluating.
So do I. I, I, if, if I were to buy down there, I would want a fence.
All the way around?
No, no. I, I, the, the, uh, the part that was added about from, uh, the front of the house back is okay. Front of the house is not okay. I, I totally support that. I.
Mm-hmm.
So. Yeah. So, you know, whether we, whether we take the action today or some other time, I believe we're going to be taking the action.
And I, I just, I think it would be easier to do it before you get somebody that's angry or is ready to do something next week pressuring. You know, again, to be proactive about what do we want it to look like? And maybe the decision will be, yeah, no fences still, we still, you know, that's fine. But I think it's something that we ought to consider. It, it's worth considering.
People are going to need some fence and because there is no, because there is, it's no other vegetation. I mean, it is just a, like you said, it's a flat land of weeds. Um.
People will be planting yards, but still.
Planting yards, which then goes back to our water issue. But it also, just because of the nature of the property, I can see having those backyard fences as being acceptable.
Yeah, I, I, I think the planning commission's done a good job.
Yeah, I do too.
So I could suggest we move on.
Okay.
Are we going to take action on it though?
Well, that comes in planning.
Yeah, in, in the meeting, somebody can make a motion and we'll just, or not. Um, all right, city council reports. Doral.
Okay, um, real quick, I want to hear from Bob how last Friday went at the park.
I was going to talk about that down on number, uh.
Well, let's leave.
We had, uh, I think it was a very good winner in the park activity, especially when you consider that it was freezing cold.
And it was one ward's ward party at the same time.
Was there? Okay.
Yes.
There, there was about 125 people in attendance. Not, not all at the same time. Some people came and did activities and then left, which, which was appropriate. I think that, uh, Sherry Berger and the committee did a, did a great job. I think getting the, um, um, Red Barn, is that what it's called? Red Barn wagon to, uh, to take people around on was a great idea and a great, uh, support from them uh, in not charging us anything, even though we may gave them some money. Uh, but I think we need to recognize them for that support. And, um, I would think that we should, uh, look at how we can continue to do this in the future.
Yeah.
And I would, um, encourage you to get a banners made for the mailboxes to advertise.
Yeah, we talked about that with one of the things we, we missed.
That just, well, and it just got past me too. I never even thought of it.
Put it in the newsletter. We put it other places. I got phone calls about it to tell people.
There were people.
Yeah, they're still.
That there was at least one couple that were from Salem that were just driving by. They saw the activity and they stayed in and had a good time.
Yeah.
Which is fun. So. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Moving on now, there's another event this Saturday with, uh, Santa into town with the fire truck. So we will, uh, we'll be giving you information about that. And we're, uh, we're moving forward with that. It's going to be fun. Um.
Again, I, I just want to go back and say thanks to Dan Roden for having this vision and driving it.
Oh, yeah, it's.
He's the one that's made this happen and.
He does more than you know about that day. It's.
And I think we really should appreciate the elf too.
There's a whole lot. No, not this year. Uh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's a habit. Yeah.
I know.
But, but, um, I want to, uh, we have to follow EMS rules and procedures, the same as Salem. Every December in Salem, they have some elections for some of their EMS people. And I want Rachel to inform. I want Rachel to inform the city who was elected by the department to have additional positions in the EMS department.
The first time elections up here because. Recently come down on us because of running the New Salem license and asking to kind of match up our call with Salem. So we've been working on this. What we decided to do, we appointed Richard Larson as the assistant captain. And he has some experience and he's super awesome. We're really happy about that. And then the positions that we.
Well, and one of your concerns was making sure that you had somebody that was going to be available and had the right background and.
Yes.
Because we don't have full-time people that are regularly serving. So there are people that are great volunteers, but they don't do much. I mean, they're just not spending a lot of hours and getting the experience and stuff. Right. So I'm just kind of explaining that. Thank you. Go ahead.
So the positions that we held elected for were a training officer who is in charge of inputting hours, coming up with the different trainings and identifying areas. We have an equipment.
Who, who, can you tell us who was elected for the training?
She's getting there.
Oh, Rich, so Richard is appointed as assistant captain and he's elected. Okay.
So he's going to be well for us. He has an advanced EMT, which is helpful as well. And then we have the supply officer who is in charge of keeping up stock, finding supplies that we need at the best cost, the price of everything that we need is going up practically.
That's weird.
We made an order in June.
It's an anomaly.
And the price jump was 20%.
Is that also Richard?
Yep.
Oh, that's Brian. Okay, Brian.
Super excited about that. But he would be willing to do that. And then the other one that we have is the scheduling officer. And they are going to be in charge of, so we have different events, you know, we do controlling on the 4th of July, on the 24th of July that we need to schedule shifts for, they'll be in charge of that. We have, they'll be helping with our EMS, fire, expo, transportation dinner. Both EMS and fire have to bragging path off every year in each of the apparatuses to get everybody through all of those. It's scheduling my dinner. They'll do that as well. So that is Jennifer Adams. We're super excited about. She actually just passed her EMT test.
Today.
So we have a new.
Oh, yay.
It's a big effort.
So we're super excited about it.
So three elected and one appointed.
Three elected, one appointed.
Thank you for the EMS people.
Thank you to Rachel for being the leader of that. She, she didn't, I don't think she knew it. She was getting to a joy until she jumped in the middle of it.
Nobody does in this city.
She's, she's terrific to work with. We, we like to, we like to work with her. She's very helpful. And then my last comment I make carefully, but it's got to be said, a resident in our city the other night at three in the morning called 911. Someone was pounding on her door and she was alone. And the response time was one hour. And, you know, that, that concerns me. And so I plan on spending some time with our new mayor and, and trying to see if we can improve that response time. What are you going to say, Rachel?
I do too.
So sometimes we have some medical calls that we are unable to respond into the house until we have a police officer go in first to make sure that it's within our call list. And there have been a couple of times that the wait time has been 30 minutes when we know that somebody needs us inside. So.
I discussed this with the sheriff the other day and the, and the deputy. And, and I said, because if it, I don't know if it's the same incident, that the, the one who reported to me, her husband was home. They knocked on the door. They said, is this your dog? And then that whole situation. And so I asked about that because it was an hour and a half for an officer to get up here. Part of it is that we only pay for a part-time officer. We don't have a fully dedicated one.
Wait, I'm going to inject here. It's $92,000 a year we pay.
Right. But it's still a part, it's, it's still part-time. And so with that, we only get so many hours. But if it is, so by the time it's somebody knocking on your door, they're not intruding. So it's not considered a priority because the person left, right? And so there's, there's a difference in the way you report your call to dispatch. But the officer who is assigned to our city requested that we have additional drive-bys every single night from the nighttime to the early morning to see if, what cars are going around the city. Because we've had an increase in reports of people coming on property early morning, really late at night. And so he has requested that and they have been doing it. So.
But I am concerned about these medical calls.
Yeah, the medical calls, that's a, that's another story.
Do we know what it, what the, what it would cost to go with the full-time coverage? I mean, we're talking 92K now.
Chris?
It's over 150. Right about 150, yeah.
Might be worth it.
Might be worth it.
Might be worth it.
Because we would, we could share somebody with Elk Ridge and they were, they would be on site. Somebody would be on site between the two cities.
I'm, I'm very.
You just said something that doesn't make sense.
I know.
We share? Wait, we're paying for a full-time officer?
We would have a full-time officer between the two cities 24 hours a day.
Yeah.
Yeah. With who? With who, Chris?
With Elk Ridge.
But that leads me to believe that we're not, I mean, to Doral's point, we're not really getting a full-time officer between two cities if it takes a freaking hour for them to show up.
Well, they're dedicated 24 hours.
Stop. We don't have somebody full-time between the two cities right now. Elk Ridge, what, what?
They have a full-time.
Chris, what is, yeah, what's Elk Ridge doing?
Yeah, they're full-time right now.
They've got somebody full-time.
24 hours.
We have somebody.
24 hours, no. Because you can't have somebody 24 hours.
Yeah, they have a 40-hour-a-week person.
Yes.
Okay. So they have a 40-hour-a-week person. We have like a, are we paying for 20 hours a week?
We're about two-thirds.
Yeah.
So we're like 30 hours a week.
We increased it two years.
Yeah. So we're about 30 hours a week.
And our service went down.
Um, you'd have to get up to, isn't it 120 something hours a week to, or it's more than that. It's more like.
Well, and I, and I understand that. I mean, I, I get how.
Right.
Time clocks work. But the, the concern I have is when it's a, a 911 situation or an emergency situation, okay, do we need to tell them, don't come to our city unless it's an emergency so that we get better response times? I mean, what do we need to do so that we're not being left hanging?
That probably ought to be a discussion with the, with Doral and the new mayor and the, and the sheriff's office.
Yeah. So.
They're pretty responsive.
Let me ask Dave's question a little bit different. Do we tell the sheriff not to come up and, and look at people that are parked in the roundabouts that may be doing drugs so that we can save them to come up for a 911 call? Isn't that what we're really saying here?
No.
I mean, it's, no?
Chloe has, Chloe and I share around.
I mean, it's, it's crazy what we're, what we're talking about in my.
Dispatch calls Chloe by first name?
And they don't respond, do they? At least they haven't.
Eat, that the reason.
Because at night, there's one officer.
For the whole county. Yep.
Sounds like they have a staffing problem and that they're not staffed to support our needs.
They're not.
That's what I would tell the sheriff.
It's all over the whole.
But I'd still tell that to the sheriff.
And we share our deputy with cities far, far, far away. And that's where they are when we need them. So.
Yeah, Fairview and Goshen and one other one. They know my name too. I'm Share Bear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are the calls that are going to come in that we need them for as we look at when those calls come in are in the middle of the night.
And so what, one thing that we could do is we do have the ability to say, this is how many hours we pay for. We would like you here more in the eve, in the night or the early mornings. We can, we can designate what time of day we want them to be here. See, I thought that was the case, that they told me that we could possibly do that, although we are assigned a specific deputy and we're kind of based on his particular hours or her if they, but currently we have a him. And so.
I give my time back to the mayor.
I, I think that we need to talk to the sheriff about how they have things organized and planned. Because to have a sheriff, a deputy, I'm sorry, a deputy that is responsible for Woodland Hills and Goshen does not make sense to me.
Well, yeah, it's not, it's Cedar Fort and Fairview that are more problems.
They're, they're spending a lot of time wasted driving between these long distances where nothing's getting done that we're concerned about.
And we pay for the drive time.
But I do know that, I mean, I will say that we had a deputy that worked, this was a few years ago, daytime hours. We saw a lot of them. It was, you know, everybody thought, wow. We were having all kinds of trouble, mischief and things going on in the evenings. And then Deputy Morgan came on and he worked nights. And people said, we never see the deputy anymore. But all of a sudden, all the trouble went away because he was cruising around at night when we were all asleep. And so there is something to be said for having somebody. Yes.
Our name is out there now where it wasn't. Are you going to be coming in to cause trouble? Will you go about it now? We're building bigger houses, you know, and.
More construction workers are here.
Well, and not just that, we're building. Whenever we go through building, we get an increase, a spike in.
So let me conclude.
So, so just one point.
Okay.
I don't think this is the deputy's problem.
No, it's not the deputy.
And I, and I want to make sure that, that we're not, that we don't convey that we're bashing the deputy.
No, he's been, he's been fantastic.
I want Deputy Dutton to know that he and Craig, our fire chief, have a terrific relationship. They work well together. And he does a great job when he's available.
And we've, we've had some, we've had a couple of little like issues here and there with responses and things. And when we get a hold of Deputy Dutton, he gets in here and really, you know, handles things very well.
Well, I will tell you, when I called him about that, right after the resident called me and said, I, somebody came to my door at 3:00 AM, I texted the deputy. He was in another state and he called the sheriff's office. He called dispatch to find out what the report was. And then he called me back within the hour. So his response time, when he wasn't on ours, was still very, very quick to say, I'm so sorry, Carrie, we're going to, we're going to increase some, some times at night. And I thought that was a good, quick thing. It doesn't solve long-term, but he was very responsive. So I.
Well, and so let's, this has got to be a good discussion with the new mayor and the sheriff's office. And they're, they're responsive. They want to service well, but it's sometimes hard to define what that is.
And we need them, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Rod could go over and help manage it.
Yeah.
And also the county commission, making sure that they pay the sheriff's office enough that they can hire enough people.
They need to be budgeted.
Because that's one of the issues is county commissioners cutting the number of deputies that they have.
Yep.
Just so you know, I have a very good relationship with the chief of police in Salem. And I, I said, what, I worked everything I could with him in a long talk. What if we bought the car and we, whatever we could do. And he just will not talk about it because Salem's growing so fast, he just can't.
He doesn't have.
He's, he's, he's making a good decision not taking us on actually.
Yep.
But I like him.
He is. Chief James is wonderful. Okay. Paul MacArthur.
Okay. So I'm going to turn my time over to Corbett for a little bit and then Mark for a little bit. I, my family and I all had COVID two weeks ago. So we were, missed our meeting because I was trying to recover and keep everyone sane. So I missed that meeting. So I don't have anything to report. So Corbett, you want to go first and talk? And then Mark?
Sure. So just back on water, you guys have got gobs of wet water. It's, it's not until you start getting into the paper water that it's an issue. It's never been an issue yet as far as using more water than we have rights to. We're still well, well within the rights that we have. But keep in mind that some of the rights that we're using now are water rights that are allocated to Maple Creek. I spoke with John Files this morning. I don't know if you remember who he was or who he is. He's the controller to use on the well.
Mm-hmm.
Told me the situation that we're in on the well. Also, I wanted to make sure that the data I was giving to you guys in that water, water, water thing we sent you, where your information was accurate. He was surprised that we hadn't seen any more drawdown than we've seen in the well. Currently, we see about 10 feet of drawdown in the residual pumping level. Once you get below the sustain or the unsustainable level, they get you from static level to residual. So the first 80 feet, and that before I sent you, the first 80 or 90 feet drops almost immediately. And then from then on, it's a pretty gradual, it's a pretty gradual drop in the drawdown. So you're sitting really good. And that, I mean, keep in mind, that is only using the broad hollow well. Since we, since we started the well in, in July or August of 2019, that's the only water we use. And you still have that much capacity in the Maple Canyon well also. If you have double the capacity that you're using right now, when you take into consideration the Maple Canyon well.
And we will, we will maintain that water rights and wet water in the Maple Canyon well, no matter what Salem's development ends up becoming because they are growing.
You own 40% of the Maple Canyon.
Okay.
Unless we sell it.
Will we lose any of the wet water as they develop, even though we have paper water?
Yeah, because that's dependent on them using their share and not our.
And we're not using ours. So I, that's, I guess what I'm saying is, should we at any point occasionally use that water so they don't say, well, Woodland Hills never uses it. So we might as well. Mm-hmm. Kinda.
I mean, again, that's between us, us and Salem. But right now, you have, you own 640 gallons a minute. Now, if that, if that level in the Maple Canyon well drops and you can't get 1,600 gallons a minute, then you only get 40% of what it will put out. But whatever that is, it is. But just keep in mind, you've got gobs of water, you've got gobs of wet water and the, and the capacity to get it out of the ground. In fact, John submitted a report this morning to the state based on the pumping that we've done in the past two years to increase our, our approved yield.
The wet water?
And the gal from, the schedule here from Division of Drinking Water said, I have problems. She'll finish the paper. So we've increased, we will, once it's approved, we will have an increase in the state yield 30% higher than what we have right in the middle of the year. 400. Right now, it's 334 GPM, 24.7, 365, 24.7. So we've got gobs of water, wet water. You just need to keep in mind that as developments take place, they're required to bring in the paper water.
And we're only allocated, even though we have this big bucket of water, if we're only allocated this much, we cannot go beyond that, even though we can see that we have more.
Thanks, Corbett. Mark?
Ah, okay. Just trying to get unmuted. So I, they, Corbett covered a lot of the water there. I kind of only heard about half the conversation. But what we focused on, on our last committee meeting, it was last two weeks ago, was the stormwater challenges that we've been facing. Had some lengthy discussion on that. We kind of ended up flying over more at 20,000 feet than close up. We did want to make a recommendation to the council, but at the time, our mayor-elect, Winder, was in on the, on the meeting. He made the suggestion that maybe we wait until the new council is on board before we make a suggestion. But it will have to do with some water, some, excuse me, stormwater drainage studies and how to do that. So we were going to hold off a little bit until the new council gets on board to make their actual recommendation. One other thing we talked about was Ted had left the Public Works Committee to join the Planning Commission, leaving us with a vacancy. Actually, I've talked to Paul, who is leading us as a council member here, probably after this meeting. He has agreed to take that spot during our discussion. So the committee take that spot, uh, during our discussion. So the committee would, would be comfortable if the council, uh, but I believe that's the mayor's responsibility, wanted to recommend that, uh, position to Paul after he leaves office. That was pretty much our discussion o- over the committee meeting last two weeks ago.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, um, and the water line replacement stuff is still going well, right? We're just, we finished up a phase and. Yeah, waiting for warmer weather to keep moving on, right? Okay. Let's see, uh, Carrie. Utah Lake Emergency.
Yes, so Utah Lake Commission, um, mostly we focused on the legislative, uh, strategy. There, uh, is a bill with Representative Brady Brammer to create the Utah Lake Authority, which would replace the Utah Lake Commission. There is some things that are going on there, um, that still impact our city. So we will be, um, keeping up to date with that and doing some legislative, yeah, it's, because we will probably still have a financial, a financial, um, obligation associated with that. Uh, um, but we're, we're, we're working on some things. Um, I've talked with Representative Brammer quite a bit to give him our concerns. I also requested that we have an, an additional meeting right before the legislative session so that we can know what the updated, um, plans are to make sure that we are, um, well represented as cities and not just another state mandate. And so hopefully, that, I mean, we did request it, I did request it, and they did approve that. Um, and so hopefully we can continue to give our voice to make sure that this is done properly and that, um, it benefits all of the cities of Utah County.
Because right now, the, is it a commission now? Is, all the cities are represented.
All the cities in the county.
Board that they're trying to do, it will be.
Five cities.
And it'll kind of be appointed by the governor and so all the cities will lose.
Particular cities that have shoreline will be on there. And then the rest of the 10 spots will be appointed based on a whole bunch of other criteria. And so, um, but, but again, it has an impact on us, even though we have no shoreline, because a lot of things that happen with, uh, um, drinking water, um, and.